Mayor, the meeting is being recorded.
Okay, why don't we begin by calling roll call vote, I mean roll call, please?
Councilmember Becerra?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza?
Call in number? Can maybe somebody get it to her?
I see she's on the line.
Okay, here.
There you are.
Sorry about that, I was having trouble with muting and unmuting, I am present, thank you.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Here.
Councilmember Solorio? Mayor Protem Villegas?
Present.
Mayor Polito?
I am here, can you make the announcement, the folks that maybe are on the line, call in and then we'll do the pledge?
Yes, thank you Mayor. If you haven't already done so, you may take this time to Zoom or call as instructed on sana-anna.org/city-meetings. Lines will be reopened for each public hearing item, please do not call to only listen to the meeting. To listen only, you may go to youtube.com/sananaannalibrary or Spectrum Channel 3 or AT&amp;T Uverse Channel 99. If callers are watching this meeting on TV or online, please mute that device's speaker before making your comments in order to prevent audio feedback. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, and with that, if you could all please stand, place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody, if you can remain standing, is Jack Abeline on the line, or please Chaplain?
Yes, he's on the line.
Mr. Chaplain, can you proceed?
Can you dial star six to unmute yourself?
Thank you, let's pray, shall we?
Yes.
Father, thank you for this meeting that we're having this evening, and we do pray, Lord, with this very difficult time for our community, that you would be with our citizens, that you would be with our civic leaders, and that you would give to them and to us great wisdom as we seek to be well, to take care of one another, and to follow the rules together. So, you bless, Lord, this evening, I know there's lots of business to be done, may your wisdom be ours, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain, now you may all be seated. I would now like to call upon Mayor Protem Villegas and also on Councilmember Mendoza. And I know you're going to be talking about November 11th is Veterans Day, naming it officially here in the city. Can you both please, as you make your presentation, just tell us the, you know, the service you've served in, what period, what your rank was? Just give us a little bit of background, please, as you make your presentations. Please go ahead, Councilmember, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will have ladies go first, so Councilmember Mendoza can please state your name and rank, and where you served, and a little bit about your time in the military.
Definitely, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I was just seventeen when I saw that big billboard on my way to work. I had already graduated from high school, and on my way to work, I see this huge billboard off of Seventeenth and Main Street. I used to work at American States Insurance Company, East Seventeenth, just past Carrillo. And working at that insurance company, I just didn't feel any progression or advancement, and that sign would always get my attention, and it said, Army, be all that you can be. And I said, you know, I haven't done anything really to be all that I can be. And I had graduated from high school with honors, but that wasn't enough. So, I made a left turn at Main Street and right into the recruiter's office, and before you knew it, my parents were signing on the dotted line, and I had to force them because they did not want me to go anywhere. They wanted me here in Santa Ana, but I was determined to serve my country and to be all that I can be. And so, I joined the Army, and my first duty station was in Fort Jackson, which is in South Carolina, and it was an incredible experience, I had never been away from home. It was lonely, it was hard, it was physically challenging, but I remember that motto, be all that you can be. And so, I always finish what I start, and I went through that basic training with blisters and calluses, but I was determined, and so, I passed it with flying colors, and then I was in Fort Gordon, Georgia, for my advanced individual training, and my first duty, it's called MOS, was a telephone repair and installation, and it was called a thirty-six Charlie, which means that I was climbing telephone poles and fixing telephone cables and repairing phone lines. And this is the dial kind of telephones, there was no cell phones back there. And so, I did that, and then my first duty station was in Fort Rchuka, Arizona, where I also learned to do some administrative work, because as I was processing in into my duty station, my commander asked if I could type, and I said, of course, I learned that in eighth grade. And he said to his adjutant, change her duty station, she's going to stay here at headquarters, because we need somebody who's administrative. And so, I did administrative work for a while also, and after Fort Rchuka, Arizona, I was transferred to Korea, Camp Colburn, Korea, where it was the very first place where I saw snow, and it was quite an experience. Beautiful, and still serving my country, and met so many friends from different cultures, and thoroughly enjoyed it. And then, after Camp Colburn, Korea, I was assigned to Fort Hood, Texas, where I did the remainder of my four years. And I earned the grade of Sergeant, Sergeant E5, and so, I had a little platoon of my own. And it was quite an experience in leadership building and being aware of our beautiful country, and having that civic pride instilled in me, and I still have it to this day. I served my country, and now I serve my public. And that's why I continue to be a public servant, because I have not yet finished being all that I can be, because I know there's more, and I will continue to do that as your public servant here on City Council.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Let me take a moment, Councilmember, and just, you know, say thank you. I think you really caught the spirit of what I was suggesting, and thank you for your service. Mayor Protem, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and August twenty-second was the day that, nineteen eighty-five, when I joined the military, United States Army. Actually, I've always known, on a personal note, I've always known that I was going to join the military ever since I was a little boy. It was something I've always looked up to, people in uniform, and, you know, the missions and the camaraderie that I would see. Actually, you know, I came from a very humble beginning, and we didn't have any money to, for me to join the Boy Scouts. And when I got to junior high, the high school ROTC unit was visiting, and I asked if it cost any money to join. And they said, no, and I said, count me in, because I know we didn't have much. I did three years as a JROTC cadet, and I excelled, and I'm very proud of that. I'm very supportive of all the junior ROTC units here in the San Ana Unified School District and everywhere else. And I was even, I won a few awards, all city awards in ROTC in Los Angeles. So, with that, there was no question I was going to join the military when I got out of high school. I joined the United States Army in August of nineteen eighty-five as a combat medic. My first tour of duty, I went to Fort Knox for basic training, and then I went to Fort Sam Houston, Texas, which is home of the Army Nurse Corps, where I got my medical training. And then, from there, I went to Germany from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-eight. That was during the Cold War, it was East Germany, West Germany. And that's the first place also, like Councilmember Mendoza was saying, the first time I ever saw or felt snow was in Germany. And boy, I was in for an eye-opener, because it was something else. After two years there, assigned to a mechanized infantry unit, I went to, I was stationed at Fort Drum, New York, which happens to be home of the Army cold weather training, so I went from cold to colder. And it wasn't fun, and I knew I was in trouble when they gave me snowshoes and skis when I got there. I was going to learn how to combat ski. And so, after that, you know, I completed my tour of duty, got my honorable discharge, and it was during that time I saw, I noticed law enforcement, and I decided that I wanted to take that route and join the law enforcement agency when I got home. I didn't know how I was going to do it, I just knew that I was going to do it, that's it. Didn't have anybody to help me until I got here and then ran into some old buddies from high school. But that was my experience in the military, it helped me a great deal. I've been in uniform since my first year in high school. So, to me, it's just part of who I am, I'm very proud to say that. I also see some members of our staff, of the City of Santa Ana, some staff members that are also former military, and if you could raise your hand, it'd be great, there's one, yeah, one, any of our officers in the back? Okay, we got two, we got two vets here, military veterans, thank you for your service, gentlemen. And I want to also recognize all of the Santa Ana Police Officers who are military veterans, and the Orange County firefighters from the Fire Authority who are veterans. And also, I'd like to make mention that the United Mexican-American Veterans Association, our very own Councilmember, Nalita Mendoza, is the PIO and the first woman commandant for that association, the United Mexican-American Veterans Association, and we should be very proud of her and thank her for her service. I want to thank everyone, and I hope they had a wonderful Veterans Day. And Councilmember Mendoza, would you like to say a closing remark?
Yes, I would like to go into the speaking point for the, excuse me, for the proclamation that we are proudly presenting to the Santa Ana Police Department Veterans and the United Mexican-American Veterans Association, which is UMAVA, and I am the, you're right, I am the first woman commander of this organization, and currently the Public Relations Officer, and I have also been the secretary and the sergeant-at-arms. So, it's an organization that's been around for about, I helped to organize it, and it's a nonprofit, and we are still very active, provided that COVID allows us to be a little more active. One day, I will invite all of you to come in and experience one of our scholarship dances. You'll be hooked, and you'll be coming out to our American Legion for some of the activities. And I would also like to thank our police force, we have many veterans on our very own police department, and of course, the Fire Authority as well. And so, I would like to begin by saying that in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation, calling on our nation to pay a corporate homage to the veterans of all its wars, who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation.
We remember with somber and grateful hearts those men and women who have served the United States of America with distinction and valor as sailors, soldiers, airmen, and marines, and offer our support for those who continue to define the principles on which our nation was founded.
Across the city of Santa Ana, veterans who fought to protect our democracy around the globe are strengthening it here at home. Once leaders in the military, they are now pioneers of industry and pillars of their community. Their character reflects our enduring American spirit, and in their example, we find inspiration and strength.
We will never forget those heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice and all those who have not yet returned home. As a grateful city, let us show our appreciation by honoring all our veterans and working, and working to ensure the promise of America is within the reach of all those who protected it.
Today, we recognize the veterans of our Santa Ana Police Department who are viewing online. Thank you for protecting both our nation and our community, we commend you for your service.
We also recognize the United States, the United American, excuse me, United Mexican-American Veterans Association, the consideration you pay to Mexican-American veterans is exceptional, and the city thanks you for all of your hard work. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, all veterans.
Thank you both, it's an honor to have you serving with us, the rest of us on the City Council that are honored to be in your presence and to learn more about you. I've known you all for some years, but I'd never really heard these, you know, descriptions and this level of detail, and it was wonderful. Thank you again for your service and onward and forward here. I now want to call on Councilmember David Peñalosa. I believe he's going to be recognizing Felix Rivera for his outstanding contributions to the community. Councilmember Peñalosa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Councilwoman Mendoza and Mayor Protem Villegas for your services to our country. It is only fitting that I also would like to take the opportunity to recognize another veteran from the city of Santa Ana. A proclamation recognizing Felix Rivera, whereas Felix Rivera was born and raised in the city of Santa Ana, attending Saddleback High School, upon graduation, Felix joined the Marine Corps, where he served as a military police officer and was ultimately promoted to sergeant. And whereas, furthering his education, Mr. Rivera obtained a bachelor's degree in sociology from California State University, Dominguez Hills. While in college, Felix began work as a part-time tutor at his alma mater, Saddleback High School, where he realized his love for working with students and acting as a mentor to the youth of the city of Santa Ana. And whereas, upon graduating from college, Felix joined the Santa Ana School Police Department to continue serving Santa Ana's youth. In this role, he continues his mentoring to police officers of the future, working through academics and athleticism as leading the Explorer Program. And whereas, further engaging with his beloved community, Felix Rivera was appointed to the City of Santa Ana's Planning Commission on March of two thousand nineteen. In this role, Felix focused on underutilized properties around the city and promoted creative solutions to increase their use. And whereas, to help spur development during the worldwide pandemic of two thousand twenty, Felix helped to update the debilitating housing opportunity ordinance. And whereas, invested in continuous and conscientious improvements within the city, Felix also contributed to the delay of the passing of the general plan in order to address the environmental injustices that have affected our community for decades. Whereas, Mr. Rivera has done his part to protect the city of Santa Ana's charm and quality of life through his service as a planning commissioner, and now therefore, we, the mayor and the City Council of the city of Santa Ana, do hereby recognize Felix Rivera and encourage all residents to recognize his contributions and follow his example of exemplary civic engagement and duty to our city. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, thank you for that, now, Councilmember Becerra, I believe, are you going to conduct the next swearing ceremony? Is there a video? Let me just turn things over to Councilmember Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there's a video that's going to be queued up, excuse me, of the oath being administered to my appointee to the Measure X Committee, Nancy Lewis.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name for the record.
I, Nancy Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will.
That I will.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Nancy Lewis and to Councilmember Becerra for this appointment. Now, Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session, please?
Sorry, Mayor, I was answering a Councilmember question. We did have closed session items this evening, direction was given to council, we have no reportable action.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, would you like to now conduct the comments from people wishing to address City Council, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor and Councilmembers. As a reminder, only please provide comments for any item on the agenda or non-agenda items, with the exception of public hearing items. For public hearing items, please hold your comment until the mayor opens the hearing item. Before enmuting callers in the order received, I want to report out that the summary of emails provided as of today at four twenty-eight PM was from twelve A, and there was one Santa Ana resident or business owner who was in support and one in opposition, Santa Ana resident, business owner. And then, I do have also public hearing items, but I will announce that at the time when you open the public hearing. Caller with the numbers, last three numbers, six eight seven, please dial star six to unmute your call, and then you may proceed to speak. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight seven, please dial star six or the unmute icon on your phone and proceed to speak. Thank you, you may proceed. Caller, you've been successfully unmuted, you may proceed to speak. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight seven, you have successfully unmuted your phone, if you would please proceed to speak. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight seven, we could hear you, please proceed to speak.
Yes, ma'am, this is Quincy Lomper with Helmister Hargat, here to speak on the project label agreement. I'm not sure if this is the correct time or not.
Oh, no, thank you, go ahead and proceed to hold, and then when the mayor opens the public hearing item, then you may proceed to speak at that time, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, zero one zero, please dial star six to unmute your call or select the unmute icon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yes.
All right, Victor Mendez from downtown LA, I'm commenting in a group of items, items twenty B, twenty-two B, twenty-five E, and twenty-five H. They cut across some common areas of deep concern. At issue is the financial oversight of the council and use of good stewardship of public funds to assist businesses and residents in this current COVID pandemic and our deep financial crisis here in Santa Ana. Items twenty B and twenty-five H authorize both the fixed contract and any contingencies that may arise. The issue is that once contingencies authorized in the contract, the change orders which could arise will fall out of the council's oversight. While I'm not suggesting the small or marginal change orders require council approval, I would strongly suggest that the city's deficit requires that you have ongoing oversight of these limited financial resources. With the contingency authorized has presented, the city loses that control. There's about three hundred eighty-four thousand, three fifty-two of contingency in item twenty B. Although the amount in item twenty-five E, a thirty million dollar contract authorization at staff point, is not transparent or clearly identified, by that I mean the contingency that they're requesting. With respect to twenty-two B and twenty-five E, the city should look at these types of contracts of opportunities to employ local labor and use local businesses. The staff report makes no reference to either of these two economic aspirations. Twenty-two B was the ideal contract with the amount of three million per year to use our unemployed labor force. Twenty-five E would have been, could have been, an excellent opportunity to use a local Ford dealership if some type of proactive outreach effort from staff had taken place. Instead, we are giving our money to a procentual business instead of one of our local Ford dealerships who are a driver of tax revenue jobs to the city. Also, the staff reported that they contacted twenty dealerships in Santa Ana, which is really strange, because the city has only about two Ford dealerships right here in the city. Maybe a few more, but perhaps not even close to twenty. The city is bound by certainly by certain preliminary rules of vigilance, however, working with our local businesses on the contract pipelines below within the rules and should be encouraged, especially as our businesses are struggling against the ongoing effort of COVID-nineteen. Lastly, I'd recommend deferral of approval of item twenty-five. Again, there's no transparency of the contingency, the value to the ratepayers for the new meter system is not evident. The ROI for the system has not been quantified, and most importantly, the expenses to the city would reduce the water fund by eighty percent. There are just simply too many risks associated with the project that veteranization of the project is needed, and the new incoming council should be given that opportunity to vote on this important measure for the ratepaying residents. Ironically, against its backup of fiscal controls and taxpayer value, the city will take it upon itself tonight to look at ways for cost recovery and service provided to the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, five two zero, please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute button on your phone. Caller with the last three numbers, five two zero, please dial star six or select the microphone button, the unmute button icon on your phone. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight nine, please dial star six or select the microphone icon. Thank you, you may proceed to speak. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight nine, you have successfully unmuted your call, you may proceed to speak. Caller with the last three numbers, six eight nine, you have successfully unmuted your number, your call, you may proceed to speak.
Good evening, this question is for Mayor Polito, and I hope that you tell the truth tonight. We would like to know, and I think you owe it to the public and the other members of the council, to disclose what your relationship is with Jill Wallace, at least during the period between two thousand fifteen and October fifteenth of two thousand nineteen. Are you willing to do that? Are you willing to tell everybody the relationship that you had with Ms. Wallace, what that was? Well, for those of you that don't know, Mr. Polito was in a business relationship with Ms. Wallace. He was also in a personal relationship, which we understand that they were more than friends and were essentially boyfriend and girlfriend. They were also business partners, and Ms. Wallace had a business that she operated, where she would utilize her leverage and her influence with Mayor Polito as a consultant. she would utilize her leverage and her influence with Mayor Polito as a consultant for developers seeking approvals from the city. And Mayor Polito would utilize his influence. Now, Mr. Polito, is that true or not true? You're refusing to answer, right? As I suspected. Could you please explain to the public and the other members of the council why you would forward city business, drafts of your State of the City speech, to the developer's consultant? Prior to your speech, what was the purpose of doing that?
Mr. Evans, this isn't an opportunity for a response. This is just for public comment on any items on the agenda or non-agenda items with the exception of public hearings.
I disagree. I can ask questions, and if Mayor Polito refuses to answer, he refuses to answer. He certainly can't answer, and I'm allowed to ask questions. I would like you to explain, why were you forwarding privileged communications from the city, city attorney's office that were sent to you, to Ms. Wallace about the Russell Fisher project and the challenge to it? Do you care to explain your actions? Is it because there is no good answer to these questions? I would like you to explain, are you, were you in business with Ms. Wallace at the time that the Russell Fisher project came before the city council in October of 2019? Or were you in a marijuana business in Adelanto with her? Were you in a marijuana business in Santa Ana?
15 seconds left.
Can you please tell the public why the Bouchalas have certified in court that you took ownership of the marijuana business in the name of your 90-year-old father to hide your ownership interest?
Thank you for your comment. Your time is up. Caller with the last three numbers, 252, please dial *6, and you may proceed with your comment. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes, hi. Yes, if you would please.
Hello, hi. My name is Christopher Forden. I'm the project director of Santa Ana Active Streets. Good evening, council members, for your time. I wanted to, I'm mayor as well, apologies, Mayor Polito. I wanted to talk about item 60B, the ordinance to prohibit repairs and sales of bicycles and bicycle parts on public property. I wanted to voice my opposition to this item. I know that city council tonight is considering to make a misdemeanor in selling or repairing bikes on public property. I understand this is an attempt to curb bike theft, which we know, working in our community, our organization actually works with folks who ride bikes, who walk, so we're very well aware of folks who are experiencing bike theft, and we know it is a huge problem. But I think this is just the wrong direction to go. We don't need more punitive measures that'll most likely affect really our homeless residents. We need more bike storage, you know, such as lockers and bike racks on public and private property. We talked with some of our members, and, you know, a lot of their bikes couldn't even fit in their home, so they had to have it outside, and it was always at risk of also being stolen. You know, we also need bike lock education. We do this, actually, in our classes. We teach bike education to residents. We talk to them about that, but we, you know, we're still only a limited organization, and definitely more resources could go to that kind of education. You know, we need to also acknowledge that we need to support our houseless folks and not criminalize them further. You know, we need to explore other possible solutions, and really, this is just further criminalizing something that we don't need to do. And just that, and thank you for your time. I hope you consider voting against this ordinance, and really, we don't need this in the city. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 477, please dial *6 to unmute your call or select. Thank you. You may proceed to speak.
Yeah, this is Dale Helbig, 30-year resident of Santa Ana. Just want to say thank you to Mr. Vegas and Ms. Mendoza for the Veterans Day acknowledgement. I too am a veteran of the Navy. I was in for six years, spent four and a half years on a fast-attack submarine. So, go Navy, beat Army. Item 25 Echo, West Coast Arborus is being awarded a contract, and I hope you guys discuss this a little bit, because I'd like to understand why, if they're able to do the repairs for $691,000, $691,000 in 2019, why they're asking for an over $2 million contract for the next six years potentially, which is like a 292% increase in funds. So hopefully you guys discuss that. 25 Hotel, I'd like to know why we're paying full price for service agreements to this Aqua group when we're not even going to have the system up and running for approximately 30 months? I know it's being phased in, but I don't think we should be paying full price for services that we're not getting until it's fully installed. Last item is item 85 Alpha, the desire or the, you know, the desire to discuss whether we should go to a full-time city attorney or maintain the contract city attorney position. I think at this point in time, with a new city council coming in, to have this type of discussion is a little premature. It's also going to add an added cost to the city. As we all know, anytime we bring in a full-time employee, there's benefits that are incurred as a part of that. And I just think we need this stability right now in the fact that with the COVID, the large changeover in the city council, I think we can use someone that has expertise in the city issues and provide that stability going forward. Thank you very much, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 654, please dial *6 or select the microphone icon on your phone. Caller with the last three numbers, 654, thank you. You've been successfully unmuted yourself. If you can please state your name for the record and proceed to speak.
Hello. My name is Paul Nagel. I'm project director for The Bicycle Tree in Santa Ana. We're a nonprofit community bicycle center. And, yeah, thank you to all the council members. I'm speaking as myself and not on behalf of the organization. I did want to share that at the shop, similar to what Chris from SAS mentioned, is, you know, we hear about bike theft all the time. We know it is a huge problem that greatly affects a lot of residents. You know, a lot of people depend on their bikes, and it can throw a huge wrench in things when their bikes are stolen. And so we definitely want to see good solutions to it. The item being considered today, though, I believe to be the wrong approach, the criminalization of the act of doing repairs on the street or possibly selling them, is, yeah, it's a punitive approach. It's a criminalization of behavior which people might be doing for other reasons that don't involve bike theft. I think it's kind of a sloppy approach to addressing the issue, and I'm not so sure that it's really, the goal is really to reduce theft. It seems like just, you know, one more item to target homeless individuals who are the most likely to be engaging in doing repairs on the street or sales. I would hope that, you know, we could take a longer look at how to address bike theft, considering why people are stealing bikes. I think the issues to target are, you know, substance abuse, rehabilitation, you know, wanting every city in the county to be doing their part to address housing issues, and take, you know, a broader look at the roots of poverty and desperation that contribute to people getting into stealing bikes. And not just take this method, which will, you know, really just have some people have additional legal issues and be really addressing the major issues of bike theft in our city.
Thank you. Zoom ID with the last name Jones, please unmute your Zoom device.
I am not going to speak. I am waiting to interpret for some people that is going to speak in Spanish.
Okay. I will have someone walk down and interpret. If you.
Thank you.
Si usted quiere, puedes hablar ahora en español y lo que venga alguien para interpretar.
Lo que está, entonces hay otras dos personas, tres personas que quieren hablar. Ellas van a hablar en español y yo les iba a interpretar, pero si usted puede proveer un intérprete sería mejor.
Si, aquí tenemos.
Tenemos un intérprete, no se preocupe, tenemos un intérprete.
Okay, perfecto, gracias.
Caller with the last three numbers, 068, please dial *6 to unmute your call.
Yes, hello?
Yes, hi. Please state your name for the record, and you may proceed to speak.
Thank you. My name is Karla Juarez, I'm Santa Ana resident. I'm calling to make a public comment. The one is the concern in regards to the ward map that the city of Santa Ana website has. The 2020 ward map is not, is very confusing. There are two sites on the Santa Ana website. One is the city council ward map, and the other is the one that I just mentioned, the 2020 ward map, and they are not the same. On one side, you're able to put in your address, so you can see which ward you belong now since there has been a change. So I'm not sure which one is the updated, which one is correct. So I think definitely before you guys assign members of the community to committees, definitely people should be involved and promote civic engagement, so they should know and well aware of what ward they belong and that website should be updated. My second concern that I have is the relationship of the city council with Mike Kara. I see a lot of, just a lot of land going to a single developer, which that should, to any person, should raise a red flag. There shouldn't be just one person or one developer or one site of anything. There should be a well-balanced. And so much property going to Mike Kara, I think should be a sense to others and also the city council. And that, those are both my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Did you want to speak on also 75A at that time? If you want to hold your public hearing, when the mayor opens up the public hearing item, then you may speak at that time. Did you want to proceed to put you on hold for that reason?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, that comment was meant for 75A. I did also want to mention the environmental justice, that there had been a couple meetings in the general update, the general plan update that has not been available to the public, which I would also like to request a copy of a meeting note or a copy of the recording. There's the general plan of the anti-displacement roundtable that happened on October 13th, and also the general lead contamination roundtable that happened on October 9th, which neither one of these has a recording of the event or the recording of the audio or any meeting notes. And especially being a person that lives in the community that's being affected, I think it should be available to the public that is living with less contamination and air contamination.
15 seconds left.
And whatnot. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 047, please dial *6 or select your microphone unmute button.
Yes, hi. This is Diane Fredkin, 28-year resident of Santa Ana, and I just had a few comments on item 75A. Although I am in favor of redevelopment in the city of Santa Ana, I think that we need to.
Pardon me for interrupting, but for public hearing items, please hold your comment until the mayor opens that hearing item. We'll go ahead and place you back on the holding queue for item 75A. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, Zoom ID identified as Katerina Birch. If you would please select your unmute button on your device. You may proceed with your comment.
I wanted to comment on item 75A, but I can wait until the public hearing to do so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Zoom ID Joaquin Avalos. If you would please unmute your device. Okay, Joaquin Avalos, you have successfully unmuted your device. Please go ahead and speak on any public, on any item on the agenda or non-agenda items. Zoom ID Joaquin Avalos, you have been unmuted. You may proceed to speak. Zoom ID Jordan Sisson. Please unmute your device, and you may proceed to speak.
Good morning, honorable council members. I'm here to speak on item 75 Alpha, and I reserve my comment time during the public hearing.
Thank you. We'll put you back on the holding queue. Thank you. Zoom ID Carla Juarez. Please select the unmute on your device.
Thank you. I already spoke to the phone.
Thank you. Zoom ID Lorena. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device, and you may proceed to speak. If you would please select the unmute feature on your device and you may proceed to speak.
Ah, mi nombre es Lorena Palacios.
Okay, si puede hablar.
Si, mi nombre es Lorena Palacios y he vivido en Santana durante 17 años. Trabajo en Hilton de Irvin como recamarrera. No deberíamos proporcionar millones en subsidios. Me opongo a la cesión de nuestros terrenos públicos en Tercera y Broadway. Este proyecto podría ser muy diferente. Podría alquilarse para obtener ingresos a largo plazo.
Disculpe señora, si puedes aguantar para el tiempo cuando el, abrimos ese, porque ahorita no estamos hablando de esa, item, de ese tema. So si puede aguantar hasta que hable, abren el, ese tema.
Podría ser muy diferente, podría alquilarse para obtener ingresos a largo plazo o usarse para algo que realmente beneficia a los residentes. Por favor, vote no.
Caller with the last three numbers, 365. Please dial star six to unmute your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 365. Please dial star six to unmute your device or select the microphone icon on your phone.
I'm here to speak on item 75A, so I'll wait.
Zoom ID, Tobin White. If you would please unmute your call. You can select the microphone icon on your device. As a reminder, please provide only comments for any item on the agenda or non-agenda items, with the exception of public hearing items. For public hearing items, please hold the non, hold your comment until the mayor opens Okay, mayor, it looks like that's all the callers we have. Mayor Protem, we have no more public comments, waiting for any of the other non-agenda or agenda items, with the exception of public hearing. So we are now on consent calendar items.
Okay, we're on consent calendars and we're, to correct the, for the record, we're done with the public comments, correct? Is that right?
That's correct, with the exception of public hearing items.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any items that the council members would like to pull? Please let the clerk know.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go ahead and pull items 28, 20D, 22B, and 55A.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes.
Is there any other council members with?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to pull item 25B, as in boy.
25B as in boy. Anything else, Councilmember Peñalosa?
No, that's it.
Okay. Is there any other council members? Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. If you could pull 12A and I'll be an abstention on 25C subsection eight, that property, there's several properties listed on the historic preservation list. That property is close to a property that our family holds, so I will abstain on that one, with the exception of that single property. Everything else, I'm free to vote on.
Okay, very good noted by the clerk. Councilmember Solorio? Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm back, Mayor Protem. Sorry about that, I got this connected. But I'm back. Go ahead, council member.
I will make a motion to approve the balance.
I'm sorry, can you also include Mayor Protem, or Clerk 55C as well?
So I have a motion to approve the balance. Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
Is there a second? Approve the balance?
Second, Sarmiento.
Roll call vote on the balance, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
What items were pulled and in what order, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Becerra pulled 20A.
Okay, let's go to that. Councilmember Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 20A is the item for approving appropriation in regards to amending an agreement with Magellan advisors regarding the citywide wireless network that we're hoping to have here in the city. So, the current contract, as I understand it now, is 225,000 and the appropriation would add 36,685 for the total, 261,685. I'll wait for Nabil Salva to join us at the podium. So just, so my first question is, that appropriation of the 36,685, that would make the total contract with Magellan 261,000, correct? Okay.
Yes.
So this, in the staff report, it talks about Magellan helping us assess whether, well, how to incorporate or implement a citywide and fiber optic service for our residents for internet and online services. So would Magellan's contract also cover preparing the RFP?
That's what we're adding right now. Magellan was tasked to perform a feasibility study for a fiber infrastructure for the city and give us cost estimate, a high-level cost estimate for fiber infrastructure for the city of Santa Ana. Following that study and assessment, we have asked, we wanted to ask Magellan to prepare an RFP to go out and see what the industry is looking like and how we can join forces with private industry so we can build that fiber infrastructure. So this is an RFP to see what's out there in terms of infrastructure and partnership with private industry.
Okay. And I love what I'm hearing and I read that as well in the staff report. I guess, I just want to make sure I understand clearly though, so, so these folks, Magellan, they're going out, are they doing more of a survey of the industry or are they actually putting out an RFP as in, we, the city, are accepting proposals based on Magellan's work out there?
Not quite. We are asking Magellan to us, to help us prepare the RFP.
Okay. And that's based on their survey work as they go out to the industry to see what's...
That's correct.
Okay, so the city, I just want to make sure, so the city is still preparing the RFP, they're aiding us with their work?
Exactly.
Okay, because I just, you know, the thing, you know, I've had lots of conversations recently with our school principals and a lot of parents who are just very concerned about what we have in the city. You know, at one point in time, we would all talk about the digital gap and, you know, the digital divide and how we could, one day, wouldn't it be great if we bridge that gap? But today, especially under COVID, it's just more obvious and more apparent that we need to, it's not just a lofty goal anymore, it's something that's more of an essential, it's a necessity. And so I want to thank you, Nabil, for working on this and trying to move this forward because I know some of my colleagues and myself, we've all expressed to you and, and staff that this is a priority for us. So from a timeline perspective, when do you anticipate Magellan to be able to come back with their, let's call it their survey of the industry?
Within 60 days, we think that the RFP will be ready to be sent out.
Okay. So we're hoping for Magellan, once we appropriate this, kick them off, they'll come back to staff within 60 days and you guys will have an idea of what to gear the RFP around.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, those are my questions. I'd be happy to go ahead and move the item.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Becerra. Please, any other comments? If not, roll call vote.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item, there was pulled, Madam Clerk?
20D, pulled by Councilmember Becerra.
Okay, please go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to get as many items in early so I can give the rest to my colleagues. So, item 20D, this is in regards to the appropriation adjustment in regards to an MOU that we need with OCTA and some surrounding cities regarding the master plan of arterial highways. So, from my understanding on this item, so we need to complete this MOU as part of complying with OCTA in regards to the MPAH, correct?
That's correct, sir. So we need to make amendments to classifications of certain streets to be in compliance with OCTA's master plan.
Okay. I mean, you know, from a regional perspective, the MPAH is great because it forces us to work with our surrounding neighbors and try to have some sort of consistency and compliance with, you know, road designations, speed limits, et cetera. One thing though, that I think the MPAH is kind of a hindrance to Santa Ana is the fact that, you know, in Orange County, we are the urban core. And so you've got these cities that have a more suburban mentality and mindset and as they are completely happy, you know, zooming through their town at 45 miles per hour, we, you know, have gone a different direction. We're, you know, really a more walkable urban center and we have narrower streets. I think we've seen through a lot of the investment through our, you know, our grants that we've received for road diets and our roundabouts that we're not trying to, you know, speed up traffic through town. In fact, I think we'd like to have people kind of see some of the charm that we have here in Santa Ana. But one of the issues, and I understand the MPAH, as much as I want to wax poetic about some of the concerns I have, I know that the reality is there are some purse strings attached to it and that complying with the MPAH allows us to continue to receive M2 funds from OCTA. But one concern I had, and I wanted to ask this, so one of the things that Santa Ana does have, in addition to having this urban setting, is we also have a great investment of transit service here in Orange, here in Santa Ana. And with that, when I was reading through the staff report and I got to exhibit one that talked about the parameters of the MOU, one thing that alarmed me was in the impact section, it stated, quote, "Reclassifications and removal of transit lanes may result in impacts to OCTA's high-quality transit service of 15-minute headways in the city of Santa Ana." And then it went on to say, "Reclassifications proposed on McFadden for OCTA Route 66 and First Street, where OCTA Route 64 is, would impact spans across the city." So I guess what I'm concerned with is, is this MOU and the corresponding transit study that this appropriation is going to go towards, are we basically designing impacts to our transit service?
Sir, let me ask the Public Works Director to come up to answer that question, but basically what the MOU does require us to do is, based upon development, we are required to do a study to determine what the impacts are. As to what that would further require us to do, I will certainly defer to the Public Works Director.
Yes, as the, as a requirement of the adoption of the master plan of highway, arterial highways, the OCTA board and staff had some concerns about their high-quality transit through the two streets, McFadden and First Street, and they made it a condition where we need to study the effects of our reclassification of those streets on transit. So we are committing $250,000 to OCTA to jointly perform a study where we will be making modification to these streets that will not impact the high-quality transit system that they have through those two streets.
So if I understood what you said correctly, what you're saying is you want to study these to make sure that we're not impacting the transit service that we're providing along those two routes?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're not seeing a diminishment of those routes?
We're going to make sure that they're not affected by our reclassification of the streets. And that's a concern that OCTA had. And so we understand and we will do the study and we'll implement the, the study recommendations to continue to provide that high level of transit through those two streets.
I also want to, in addition to OCTA, express my concern about impacting transit here in Santa Ana. There's a lot of folks here that, you know, pre-COVID, we're using it because it was a choice, but we also have a significant amount of our population that uses it as an asset and a resource. So anything that we can do to not deliberately hurt our transit service, I would appreciate. So I'm appreciative that you explained that to me and on the same thing, I would go ahead and make a motion to move this item forward.
Thank you for that. I'll go ahead and second that motion and I'd like to make a comment and then we'll take more comment and if no more comment, we'll vote. This was discussed at some length at, you know, Regional Highway and Planning, you know, committee. Also on the board level, it was discussed and all the early indications are that there is no degradation of service, but we committed, we as a city committed to OCTA to do additional work just to confirm that that's the case. But it's a fair concern, Councilmember Becerra, and it's one that's been aired out and it's going to be studied further, but at this point, we think that it's the right thing to do is to move forward, so I'm happy to second your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other thoughts or comments? No, you're welcome and thank you for the question. Any other thoughts or comments, council members? Roll call vote, if no other comment. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
22B, pulled by Councilmember Becerra.
Please go ahead, council member.
I told you, mayor, I promised to get them out early, so item 22B...
No, you're good, you're good. Keep going, you're doing well. Keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item 22B, you know, this is a common theme for some of us up here on the dais, which is, we'd like to see city funds go towards city businesses to procure, whether it's services, whether it's, in this case, heavy-duty trucks. So I guess what I, and I understand a lot of times when we talk about these items, a lot of times there are just, we don't receive bids from local vendors, and I understand that. But we do have a good economic development department, we have some able-to-buy staff and, you know, sometimes maybe they just need some fresh air. Is there maybe a push that we can get folks literally just to knock on some doors and ask some of these local city businesses? I mean, you know, especially the fact that we have a wonderful auto mall, there's got to be one or two dealers that we might be able to entice with trying to do business with us. It just pains me that we're not even doing business sometimes in Orange County and my preference all day, every day is going to be to do business with folks here in Santa Ana. But is there any way that we can expand efforts to really just go out there and find out why we're not getting any nibbles on the proposals that we're submitting out there, the request for proposals? Excuse me.
Certainly, council member. I know this concern has been brought up before in regards to, we notify the... I know this concern has been brought up before in regards to, we notify the vendors, yet oftentimes, we don't receive any bid from those vendors that are located in San Ana, even though there is a preference given to those that are located in our city. I would suggest that through our economic development department, outside from an active bid being on the street, we work with them to help provide maybe some training on how to respond to a bid, talk to them about the advantages of doing business with the city, and maybe seek to find out what is their apprehension to doing so through our economic development efforts. That's something we could easily put together.
Well, I would ask that if staff could do that, I appreciate that offer. I would, I think our economic development team is definitely up to the task for it, but what I would ask is maybe offline and, you know, email to the council if there are any findings from those visits as to any actions that this council needs to take in order to facilitate a more friendly environment for these businesses to do business with the city. I would appreciate that, and I hope my colleagues would support any suggestions that we receive that we can act on to help these folks do more business with us.
Certainly.
So with that, I'll go ahead and move the item.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, and I support my colleagues' comments in regards to that.
I think, I think we all do, and thank you for the second, Councilmember Peñalosa, and I think it's a very valid, valid comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Roll call vote, if no more comments.
Mr. Mayor?
This is Councilmember Solorio. Very briefly-
Go ahead.
In addition to what's been said and, you know, prior efforts in the past, I know some entities like the county, they'll do a monthly or quarterly workshop on how to do business with the county. In this case, it would be with the city. Maybe we might want to think about doing that, you know, monthly or quarterly, and they could be done by Zoom, which in some ways creates some efficiencies and maybe more opportunities for our business members in our community and others to learn that way, so that that might be a thought as well for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, Councilmembers? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item?
Twenty-five B, polled by Councilmember Peñalosa.
Please go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty-five B is to approve a second amendment to extend the term and increase the outdoor dining space for the license agreement with East End Realty Partnership, LP and Westhouse Inc., allowing temporary outdoor dining activities to occur within Plaza calle cuatro from December 1st, 2020 through November 30th, 2021. This, I pulled it not necessarily because I have questions in regards to this item, but, so I'll just move it now, but I just want, it's related to this, and I just wanted to implore staff that moving forward, as we look at the governor's orders and how we're moving back to purple tier, I know that these outdoor dining activities aren't going to be temporary. We're in it for the long term. I mean, I'm imagining it going through at least another six months to a year, where we're very restricted in how businesses can operate. So I would implore our Economic Development Department and our downtown businesses to try to, I guess, have a uniformed outdoor seating arrangement. I drive through downtown, and every, you know, other restaurant has different kinds of tents out there, and chairs, and tables, and it just looks very tacky. At first, I was, you know, turned a blind eye to it, thinking and hoping that it would be temporary, and we would move back indoors quickly, but now as it looks that we're going to be going into this for the long haul, I would appreciate if we help these businesses to make sure that it all looks, you know, the same, even. Help them in any way we can, moving forward, so that they're out, so that it looks decent. I mean, I've driven through downtown Orange, the entire outdoor seating area for every restaurant looks the same. It looks, it's pleasant, you know, to be out there and downtown LA and other restaurants, not so much downtown LA, but downtown San Diego, I'm sorry, and nothing compared to what we've seen here in downtown San Ana. So, that is basically it. So, whoever can make sure that there's some kind of standard that we have. Obviously, we're also helping the businesses, so it'd be nice if they would abide to that standard. So with that said, I'll move the item, twenty-five B.
I'll go ahead and second.
Any comments? Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second with comment. I want to thank Councilmember-
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Councilmember Peñalosa for his comments. I think, you know, as we were talking about the citywide internet service earlier, it's kind of the same thing where, you know, at one point, you know, in planning circles, you would hear talk about parklets, and let's take back the street from the car, and let's do outdoor dining, it sounded like a kitsch, nice, neat, pretty thing to do, and now we see it as an essential service. So, I would implore staff to kind of think down the road, I'm not asking for action tonight, but just to think about what those standards will look like, because I think, hopefully, in addition to what Councilmember Peñalosa said about trying to create some uniformality among these outdoor dining arrangements, but also, I'll be supposed to say, maybe even street closures on a permanent level, because I think there are some streets in downtown we're seeing right now. Third Street between Broadway and Sycamore is one, where, I mean, unless somebody tells me, Nabil, has there been a huge bit of gridlock because of that loss of the street? If not, I think we'll be okay. So maybe we start to explore, maybe there's other places. You know, the Second Street promenade has always been seen as a success, but why stop there? So, that's my comments, Mr. Mayor. Again, I second the motion.
All right, let me throw a couple comments in, and then we'll continue with comment, and if no more comment, then we'll vote. I just wanted to maybe give us the concept of what other cities are doing. For example, in Huntington Beach in the downtown, they have like these heaters that they've put out there, and they, they're natural gas, I think they have a flame. I'm pretty sure the city had something to do with it, because they're uniform, and they're up and down like Fifth Street and Main Street, and as they close down some of those areas for restaurants and all, it just gives it a feeling of uniformity and order. Also, in downtown Laguna, right off of Ocean and PCH, they brought in a series of lights, so, and the lights are uniform. So, when you're out there, it, I think it addresses part of what, you know, the excellent point Councilmember Peñalosa is making. So, maybe the city manager and others, I know these are some of the last meetings I'll be in my council with, but I think there's some good examples of cities here in Orange County. So with that, any other comment? If not, I'll call for the vote. Seeing no one, a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item?
Fifty-five C, polled by Councilmember Sarmiento.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, Councilmember.
I think there was another item that was polled.
I believe fifty-five A was also polled, Madam City Clerk? Oh, yes, thank you. Item fifty-five A.
Go ahead, please.
I'm not sure who pulled that one, I didn't, but I pulled fifty-five A and twelve, you know, and let me also just say, I pulled twelve A as well, and we skipped over that, but I saw that it was going to be-
Why don't we go back to twelve A? Would you like to do that?
No, not necessary. What I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, is that I saw on the back page, is that we're simply just adopting a resolution for the public hearing to occur on the 15th of December, so that's fine. So I'll go ahead and withdraw my request on that, and I'll go ahead and cede the floor for fifty-five A.
Are you good?
I don't have on my notes fifty-five A, so if a Councilmember pulled it-
I did pull fifty-five A.
Okay, okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, so this is the resolution rescinding a council resolution that was adopted prior to my tenure regarding a car wash on Tustin Avenue. Now, this item was placed on the consent portion of our agenda, which had not been pulled, we would be approving it, and I just have a couple of questions before we, you know, take action on it. So I would like to ask our city attorney, so first of all, with these entitlements, just to make sure I understand, is the applicant required to build what was approved, which is the car wash, just because the council adopted the items? So the applicant is not required to immediately go out there and start building this car wash, correct?
Right, but a developer who contains entitlements doesn't necessarily have to implement or build.
So there's the permit, but then there's the action, or the time that the city allows for the applicant to take action, but there's nothing that locks the applicant into taking that action?
Right, there are certain timeframes in which entitlements remain in effect.
I can't hear, can everybody else hear?
There are certain timeframes in which an applicant's entitlements will remain in effect, they can expire, but you, a city cannot force a developer to build simply because they were approved, their project was approved.
Okay, thank you for that, because, you know, one of the terms of the council's approval of the project, in addition to just simply giving them permission, the applicant by accepting the approvals has agreed to indemnify the city. So in other words, they're going to assume the risk and liability of the approval that the council gave to the applicant. So, is the requirement that an applicant indemnify the city a pretty standard requirement in discretionary approvals, such as CUPs, like the one that the council granted for this applicant?
And may I just, for the record, maybe perhaps ask your building and planning director to be able to answer that, because he does prepare those entitlements, maybe with the city manager's approval, he can speak to that issue.
Mr. Tai?
Certainly, our Director of Planning, Min Tai.
Thank you. Just so I understand your question, I believe you were asking if the indemnification is a standard requirement that the city place upon when we are looking at considering approving discretionary projects like a CUP. That is a standard condition that we implement, I know at least since I've been here, on projects that are entitlements, and therefore, the project applicant is required to indemnify the city against legal litigation on that decision.
Okay, okay. And I have a couple of other questions in regards to, when it comes to the liability, but I, you know, I think all of us up on the dais received an email late this afternoon, I mean, very late, as in very close to the beginning of this meeting, and I'd ask our city attorney to confirm at this point what it is that we received.
So, shortly before our meeting started this evening, and I did forward to each of you a copy of a settlement proposal, the proposal is from the petitioners who are challenging these approvals, and they specifically asked that I share that settlement proposal with each of you, so you should have it in your email, and hopefully, you were able to review that before the meeting.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So, I pulled this item because of the fact that we are, the approvals are facing legal challenges, and the fact that we, as a city, are protected with the indemnity clause provided in the approval, and it's a standard item that's included in any other CUP, and I just have a very hard time wanting to relinquish that, given the current state of this. And what furthers my, I guess, resolve in regards to not being in favor of rescinding these entitlements is the fact that we have received this last-minute email, and there is still some up-in-the-air concerns regarding the litigation that is attached to these approvals. So, I pulled this item to say that, at the very least, I would not be supportive of rescinding the entitlements at this time, and my position has been, and at this point continues to be, that, you know, the longer we've waited on these, the more things have shaken out, and as we've seen literally today, right before we began our deliberations this evening, that there continues to be more developments in regards to the litigation. And so, at this point in time, I don't feel comfortable in what we're charged to do, to defend the public purse, to relinquish that indemnity protection. So with that, I will not be supporting rescinding the entitlements, and I would even be open to possibly continuing the item yet again, but at the very least, I would not support rescinding at this time.
Mr. Mayor? I personally want to recognize any other speakers. Was that Councilmember Sarmiento? Or what was that?
I would like to make a-
Mayor Prokam?
Mayor Protem Vegas, I would like to make a motion to approve rescinding this item, make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, this is-
I'll second the item.
This is Councilmember Peñalosa. I was going to second Councilmember Becerra's motion to continue the item. I also will not be supportive of this item tonight, I cannot, because the reason it's so problematic is because, you know, the developers and the consultants involved now all want to just walk away and leave the city possibly having to pay a half a million-dollar bill. The city and its residents should not have to take any risks in this case, and they certainly should not have to pay half a million dollars to the lawyers suing the city. If the city has to pay, the developer should pay, because that is what he agreed to when he got his approvals. The lawyers want to recover their attorney's fees, which at this point, they say are $500,000. By rescinding the approvals, two things will happen. One, Russell Fisher will no longer be on the hook to pay the city's fees, and just because the city rescinds the 2019 approvals does not mean the lawsuit automatically goes away. The city will still have to continue to defend the case with its own lawyers and pay all the cost, and if the judge in this case eventually orders a payment of any attorney's fees, the city will have to pay that too, not Russell Fisher. I cannot support rescinding the 2019 approvals and letting Russell Fisher off the hook, because how is that good for the city? That is completely irresponsible. We are charged to take care of the public purse, and for anyone on this dais to sit here and approve rescinding the approvals, knowing that the taxpayers of San Ana during a global pandemic are going to be left with a half a million-dollar bill, is completely irresponsible and foolish for any of us to do. So I unfortunately cannot support rescinding these approvals, and I will, and I would like to second Councilmember Becerra's motion to continue the item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
We already have a motion and a second to vote on the item. Why don't we vote and see if it prevails or not?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue the item.
All right, roll call vote on the continuance, and if we don't continue it, we'll come back to the original motion, which was a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, to dot the i's across the t's, I'm going to go ahead and second Councilmember Peñalosa's substitute motion.
Well, he was seconding what he thought was your substitute motion.
No, no, if I'm keeping score on the dais correctly, it looks like we had Council, or Mayor Protem Vegas making a motion with you seconding, and then Councilmember Peñalosa made a substitute motion, which I am now seconding.
No, I, Councilmember Peñalosa, didn't you state that you thought Councilmember Becerra made a motion?
Well, Councilmember Becerra had originally made a motion to continue, but everyone just jumped ahead and interrupted and made a motion while you were still asking for colleagues-
I don't think he made, did you make a motion to continue, Councilmember Becerra?
At this point, regardless of my motion or non-motion, Mayor Protem made a motion, and Councilmember Peñalosa is making a substitute motion, so I-
That's all I heard, that's all I heard.
Councilmember Becerra, I apologize, I didn't hear if you made a motion.
No, 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 no.
So you did make a motion?
No, I did not.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But we're still on track, though, that's why I feel we're okay.
All right, we didn't, we didn't make, there was no substitute motion until Councilmember Becerra made a motion, I mean, Councilmember Peñalosa. So what I suggest, let's vote on the substitute motion. If that fails, then we'll go back to the original motion, which was a motion to rescind. So, please, roll call vote on the substitute motion, which is just to continue the item. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa? Councilmember Penyloza?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Vegas?
No.
Mayor Pulido?
No.
Motion carries five-two.
All right. Let's go on to the next item.
Item 55C, pulled by Councilmember Sarmiento.
Yes, thank you, and thanks, Ms. Rudolph, for already being at the podium. So I just had a question on this, and I know it's a resolution and it's not binding, but we're talking about a new policy for cost recovery on parks and recs and community service expenses. So to the extent that I think we had discussed going through and seeing where fees should be applied and where costs could be recovered, the only thing was, you know, I was hoping to see a little bit more detail on what programs were going to be impacted and maybe what partnerships that we have with those that provide those services would be there. You know, it's become such an important issue that your department deals with. I think that, you know, I was just not following as much which specific programs were going to be impacted, so I'm not sure if we want to maybe flesh that out. Probably not a good time to do it right now, but if you can bring something back, unless it's time-sensitive, to do it today, just so we can attach it to some, you know, real programming. And I know that we're, you know, not delivering many programs, you know, right now, but to the extent that we will have a plan that's fleshed out, that we'll eventually and gradually go ahead and provide these services, you know, just your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. This is just the policy, and we will come back to council with the specifics for programs and services. So this is just establishing a policy. If you remember back, September 15th, for the original presentation, we have now an implementation plan from that. There was 43 goals and objectives, and anything that is council, that the city council needs to approve, such as a policy, we're going to come to you with that. Approving fees, we're going to come back to you with approving fees. So we'll have those specific things at a later time, and as we work our way through our implementation plan.
So is this more of a principled intent resolution to go ahead and get us to a point where we are looking at some, you know, some recoverables on costs when it comes to certain things, like maybe reserving field space and maybe dealing with, you know, other costs that may not be, you know, completely apparent to just opening, you know, using our park space, you know, openly?
Yes, yes. All of those are included in this analysis, and we'll be coming back to you during the budget process, or if it's not during the budget process, we'll come to you if we need, like we are looking at miscellaneous fees, we need to change some of those things, but we will come back to you for your approval.
Got it. So no fees are going to be imposed until they come back and receive approval and consent by the council?
Mayor-elect, if I may, this is just basically the foundation. So oftentimes, agencies have a philosophy as to what programs they want to subsidize and what programs they want to achieve some level of cost recovery. In your Parks and Rec programs, oftentimes, you will heavily subsidize youth programs and maybe senior citizen programs, but for individuals, you will attempt to do a higher percentage of cost recovery. So this is just the foundation as to how LISA will move forward with establishing the fees, and those will all return back for your approval. But the philosophy of the cost-recover policy is to use the tax dollars to support those programs that have the most community benefits and seek the cost recovery of those programs that have more benefits to an individual.
Great. Thank you for that. No wonder it was more of a high-level document, that's why I was looking at, you know, specificity. Will it go back to the commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, for their comments and their thoughts before it comes back to us?
Absolutely.
Great. With that, I'll go ahead and move the item.
I'll second.
Any other, is there a second?
Councilmember Becerra seconds.
All right.
Councilmember Becerra?
Any other comment? Go ahead, Madam Clerk, call their roll.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penyloza?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Next item?
Business calendar, item 60A.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 60A, which is to adopt the resolution denouncing the attacks on Artsoc by Arzad Jaban.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Right, I'll make the motion. You got it. Any other comments? I'm in strong support of this. Other comments, please?
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, I'm simply, I was simply thanking the council member who brought the item through the 85A process. It's an important one, I'll be supportive as well, so we can go ahead and call roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Penyloza?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Next item?
60B.
Any, any comment on this item, council members?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like staff has a presentation.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay. Daniel Soto from the city manager office has a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, staff has prepared for your consideration an ordinance prohibiting the repair and sale of bicycles and bicycle parts on public property. At our last meeting on October 20th, the city council discussed an 85 agenda item requested by Councilmember Becerra relating to prohibition on the repair and sale of bicycles and bicycle parts on public property in the city. In order to address the illegal activity of bicycle thefts, staff has prepared an ordinance for city council consideration. The ordinance would prohibit the assembly, disassembly, sale, offer of sale, distribution, offer of distribution, or storage of the following items on any street, sidewalk, alley, public passageway, public right-of-way, public park, or other public property within the city: three or more bicycles, a bicycle frame with gear cables or brake cables that are inoperable, cut, or missing, two or more bicycles with missing parts, or five or more bicycle parts. The prohibitions would not apply under the following circumstances: when an individual is operating under a valid City of Santa Ana license or permit authorizing such activities, or when the owner of a bicycle or bicycle part is present during the repair of the owner's single bicycle or bicycle part. Violations of the proposed ordinance would be deemed to be a misdemeanor and would be punishable as provided for in the Santa Ana Municipal Code. The Santa Ana Municipal Code also provides that violation of these provisions could be responded to by issuing an administrative citation. Thank you.
Additional comment, council members?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Becerra, I wanted to thank Daniel for that presentation and thank staff for quickly putting this together for us. You know, as I was mentioning earlier, we are in a very urban city, and not only are we walkable, but as anybody can see, we're a very bicycle-oriented city. I mean, we have a lot of folks that, whether it's for recreation or just for sheer transportation, and I think having policies that are similar to other cities that have a very strong bicycle presence, like Long Beach and Huntington Beach, I think it's, it just makes sense for us to do. So I want to thank Daniel and thank staff for putting this together, and with that, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Councilmember Penyloza.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
So, Daniel, can you go back, you know, to talking about what forms of proof or evidence somebody could demonstrate if they, you know, owned the vehicle or owned the bicycle?
If the repair of a bicycle or bicycle part is taking place on public property, my understanding is that if the owner is present, or if they have a license, or if the person that is conducting the bicycle repair has a license, that that activity would be permitted.
So, so basically, if the owner or the presumed owner, somebody who was in possession of the bicycle, were present, they could show some sort of proof of ownership, whether it's a bill of sale, whether it's some sort of, you know, I guess, I thought you had mentioned card or some registration or something else, something to show a nexus between ownership versus simple possession. So I, you know, want to thank the council member for bringing this forward, because there have just been a number of thefts of bicycles in my neighborhood, and I think probably throughout the city and probably throughout the region. And you do see, you know, some suspicious behavior when it comes to possession of bicycles. But, you know, I know as a kid, I rode my bike everywhere and used to ride with friends, and sometimes, you know, your pants would get stuck into gears and you'd have to pull off. And, you know, for the life of me, if I were to be apprehended or detained or, you know, questioned, I wouldn't know how to prove ownership of that vehicle. I wouldn't have a bill of sale, a card, a registration, or anything else that could prove up my, my ownership. So my concern is that we have a good and a well-intentioned, you know, effort to codify, you know, prohibited behavior and prevent theft, but will this cast too wide of a net and maybe bring folks in that are, you know, unintentionally in possession of a bicycle that may be in disrepair, and, you know, we have our officers approach them and, you know, incite them and potentially, you know, pursue, you know, litigation and prosecution against them. So my concern is that the net is cast a little bit too wide. I want to see how we can address the problem, because it is important. I think, you know, any sort of theft of private property is, we know, is rampant, and, you know, we could limit it, we don't have to limit it to bicycles. I see computers in people's possession. I see other items that people are carrying around, and it's unfortunate, because we just see that we're living in a time where, you know, that is a real problem. We just have a lot of, you know, behavior like that, because the conditions are, you know, they're very, very dire. So I guess I'm just trying to make sure that we draft something that isn't going to, you know, draw in folks that, you know, may be innocent, have vehicles and, you know, or have bicycles and, you know, be caught up in this. So that's where I think, you know, the language to me makes it a little bit difficult for me to support. I support the intention, and I think that, you know, as we go through, and I think we'll have a second reading on this, so Madam City Attorney, maybe what I'll do is I'll do a little bit more homework on some, you know, other cities that may have run into these challenges before, where they want to cast the net wide enough and specific enough and tailor it narrowly to what our objective is. So I think those would be minor changes, if we take a look at some, that I hopefully will be welcome to those that are supporting. But for now, I'm going to withhold my support, just so I can go ahead and do a little bit more review on some of the other cities that are trying to accomplish the same thing. Those are my comments.
I'm looking at the.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. In looking at what staff brought before us, it's, here it's the draft, section 10-802 with exemptions, it looks, because I agree with you, Councilmember Sarmiento, I don't really carry my bill of sale with me in my back pocket when my chain gets caught up when I'm riding down the street. But one thing that I was a little more comfortable when I read the language that's in the proposed ordinance, was where it said that the supporting evidence for the claim of lawful ownership may include but is not limited to, which I think gives a little more latitude to any of our police or otherwise who would want to see some sort of demonstration of ownership. It doesn't necessarily tether them just to what's listed here in the ordinance, but I agree. I mean, I'm not opposed to staff looking into this particular section a little bit more specifically, but I did appreciate the fact that while it did give some examples, it left it a little open. It kind of reminds me of when you see that section of our code that talks about security, and it says, "not limited to VHS recorders and camcorders and, you know, CDs," and you kind of laugh, because we know it's antiquated and the language came from a different time. But I think with this language, I would be open to seeing what staff could shed some light on it, but I hope that it does allow for enough flexibility to where, you know, kids aren't going to be stuck trying to find the receipt to their bike from years ago.
I just have two quick comments. I think the point was well-made by Councilmember Sarmiento, that we had a first reading. If we can do some clarification, we can always add that on the second reading and not have to go back to the first. And then I will work with staff to give you some clear examples of what would be acceptable to the city attorney's office before we would actually prosecute, because, you know, we're always, we are like the, we're the backstop. So when they file these citations, we then review them to make sure that we feel comfortable with the evidence, and sometimes we turn down the citations, because we don't feel like there's enough evidence. So we'll give you some clear examples of what it would take for our office to actually prosecute.
Yeah, and that's simply what I was looking for, a little bit more specificity. I think when we draft broad language, what it does, again, it, it's a net that's cast too wide and sometimes encompasses those that we didn't intend to be punitive on. So the more narrowly we can tailor it, the better, I think, you know, I'll feel about it. So again, I think the intent is certainly a solid one, because we've seen, you know, we've seen the activity that we want to be able to punish, but we want to make sure we punish the right folks and not the folks that really, you know, we have no intention on punishing. So thank you for that clarification.
Well, I'm still going to try to angle for Councilmember Sarmiento's support on this, so would you be comfortable if I went ahead and modified the motion to have staff come back to us during the second reading regarding section 10-802B?
Yeah, subject to the clarification that the city attorney is willing to go ahead and make on my, you know, on some minor adjustments, but again, I want to be able to, you know, I may not support it at the second if, if in fact, those clarifications don't meet the standard that I'm looking for, so, you know.
Totally understandable. Would the second of the motion be open to that?
Yeah, that's completely fine.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments and a question for maybe the folks that worked on this ordinance or staff. I do like that in section 10-801, as we had talked about before, we're also talking about cases where there's multiple bicycles that are being worked on, either three or more, or in some cases, you know, if there's ones with missing parts, when we have one-off with kids, I think that provides some protections. My main area of concern, I mean, I'll support it either way, but just as a suggestion and for consistency, because I know we've had kind of different councils look at this, so there's been different decisions, but in the enforcement provision, this speaks to the opportunity to provide folks a misdemeanor violation, and I know on other policies, some years ago, we, to not criminalize folks into having more immigration problems, we limited on lower-level, non-violent offenses like this, just for them to be administrative citations or financial fines. So maybe just something for my colleagues to think about down the road. And then finally, you know, one of my concerns when we do good policies like this is we'll pass the policies, but then there's confusion on who's going to enforce these, so is code enforcement going to enforce cause of violation on this, or PD, or who?
Thank you, Councilmember Solorio. My understanding is that the municipal code provides that. I, may I defer to the city attorney?
Yep. Our municipal code allows for our code enforcement officers, as well as the police department, to cite in terms of whose primary responsibility it would be. I think that's probably best left to those departments to decide whether, you know, I don't think that we make decisions and say only code enforcement is going to cite to this code section, or only the police department will do that. I think it would be, as we enforce all other provisions, if we see a crime occurring, then we would cite the individuals.
I would just ask my colleagues and staff just to, you know, move it down this path to be more thoughtful about stuff like this, because there's been numerous instances where one can't do it, they look to the other group and it never happens, or the reality is with code enforcement, they don't work 24/7, right? You know, seven days a week, so for situations where it's in the evenings or early evening hours, when actually a lot of this stuff also happens, there simply aren't code enforcement officers on the beat to help. Maybe that speaks to, again, an ongoing wish to keep. to help, maybe that speaks to, again, an ongoing wish to keep growing that department, and giving them maybe more hours or flexibility on when they do their work, you know, because if not, I just worry, you know, it's one more reso here, but it won't be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, for those comments, and certainly, it's, it's a tool that both of those departments can use, but duly noted, it is the PD that would have the 24/7 operations, that should be aggressively enforcing this new ordinance once it goes into effect.
Thank you, City Manager.
So, just one additional question, on the point that Councilmember Solorio was making with reference to a citation, I think it may be incremental, is this, is the baseline offense punishable by a misdemeanor, or is there a, you know, where, where do we start here on, on this, as, as written, Madam City Attorney?
I think, taking into account the city council's previous direction, we are writing these enforcement provisions, as we call, we call them wobblers, so that we can have the discretion, we normally do not file them as misdemeanors, we file these as infractions, and they go through tickets. The reason we like to have the misdemeanor, and we understand the council's position on that, is that if we have someone that we've cited three, four times, and we understand this individual really is stealing bicycles, and is doing, you know, the type of thing we're trying to prevent, we'd like to have that misdemeanor authority, because the infraction doesn't get us the kind of compliance we want.
Can you codify that, and say, you know, after multiple citations, then it would trigger the, the misdemeanor offense?
I'd be happy to do that, and include that language with the second, for, for the second reading.
Okay, as a consideration.
Yeah, that would be better, thank you.
If that's agreeable to, to the makers of the motion, we can clarify that.
Yeah, that, that'd be fine.
All right, with those changes, roll call vote.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Mayor Potem Vegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Next item, Madam Court.
Public hearing item 75A.
Is there, before I open up the public hearing, or as I open it up, is there a staff presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Sarmiento, and before we begin with staff, staff's presentation, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I want to-
Go ahead.
... recuse myself on the record, because I do have a conflict, we have an economic interest, basically a property that's owned by our family, within the radius that I've discussed with Madam City Attorney, that is close enough to trigger a conflict for me not to be able to participate, for no other reason than that we do have, again, real property that's within the radius area for a conflict, so, based upon that, I will be refusing myself. Thank you.
Thank for that, it's very appropriate to abstain, and thank you for stating the reason, very appropriate. So, at this point, Madam City Manager, would you like to make a presentation? I think this is a, a project we've been working on for a long time, I know there's a lot of consensus around it, I personally am eager to hear the public hearing, and then may comment. Is there any presentation, as we open up the public hearing on this?
Yes, Mayor, so, Mayor and council members, this was a joint project, and it's been a long time in the works, led by our acting assistant city manager, Stephen Mendoza, and our director of planning, Min Tai, and just so, for some background, it is very excited that we're at this point tonight, this project, as you mentioned, Mayor, it has been in the works for seven years. It is a project that is going to take an antiquated parking structure, and turn it into a vibrant mixed-use project, bringing residential units and hotel rooms down to our downtown area, so, it is an exciting project, and we're, I'm very pleased that we're able to have this type of development interest in our city, given the current times that we're in. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our acting assistant city manager, Stephen Mendoza, to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Christine for the introduction. Tonight, we present a public-private partnership in the heart of downtown Santa Ana. This collaboration between Caribou Industries and the city of Santa Ana literally builds upon our real estate assets and airspace, while providing community benefits in the shape of revenue for services, a hotel, much-needed housing units, 13,000 square feet of retail on the ground level, 19 very low-income residential units, public improvements, including curbs, gutters, sidewalks, storm drains, a rooftop bar, transit-oriented development, public parking, and construction jobs, and permanent jobs, all of, all of this, while also reconnecting the north part of downtown with the south part of downtown via the new Sycamore. Min and I are proud to introduce Third and Broadway. As the city council knows, this project has been, is placed right in the middle of the city of Santa Ana's downtown, it's a 1.43-acre site, right in the middle of downtown. In 2013, the city council was faced with a decision of whether to reinvest $8.6 million in modernizing the parking structure, or demolishing the parking structure and seeking development partnership for that, and city council did take that second option of, of seeking proposals for a partnership to develop this segment of downtown. As Christine alluded to, we started this in 2014, and here we are today, in November of 2020. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Min Tai, who will describe the proposed development.
Thank you, Director Mendoza. This project is a true mixed-use development project in the heart of downtown, it is a project that consists of residential, retail, as well as hotel. You can see on top, there is a proposed mixed multi-use building, the 16-story residential building, consisting of 171-unit apartment, as Steve mentioned, with 19 very low-income units, and that will be dispersed throughout the project levels there. There are 95 studio units, 51 one-bedrooms, and 25 two-bedrooms. The retail is on the ground floor, activating the street along Third Street, Broadway, as well as the new Sycamore that connects to the existing Sycamore between Fourth and Third. For the parking, there are 196 residential spaces, 83 hotel spaces, and 211 parking spaces, which I'll talk about the configuration of all those parkings together. As Steve mentioned, this is a site that is currently the existing parking structure, which spans across the entire site. Under this proposed development, the project will include two buildings, and the reactivation of Sycamore, running north and south, connecting between Fourth and Third, basically. This is an aerial view, or a site plan review of the site, again, the development is two proposed buildings. What you see in the pink there is the mixed-use building, consisting of the residential units on the ground floor, as we mentioned, there are 13,000 square feet of retail commercial. There is going to be 444 parking spaces proposed for this site, which includes residential parking, the replacement of the public parking that is being removed, and then also providing some parking spaces for the hotel. Moving east on the blue, on, on the left side of the screen, you'll see that the Sycamore Street will be reconstructed, and creating a convertible street, as we call it, as this street can potentially be closed off for activities such as farmer's market, or being a pedestrian promenade, and will allow for the linkage for circulation when it's necessary between Third and Fourth Street. It will also function as the valet parking drop-off for the hotel, as shown in the left there, in the blue outline. The hotel will have 75 keys, and include on the ground floor of parking spaces, it's a little bit unique in terms of the way the parking spaces are being configured in the hotel. There will be 46 parking spaces, some of which will be configured in lift manners, as well as 488 parking spaces, and additional parking spaces, as I mentioned, are being provided within the residential building as well. Vehicle access to the site is from the alley to the north, and that is all vehicle access. In terms of pedestrian, how the pedestrian can access the parking structure is through the lobby separately from, from the vehicle entry. This is a cross-section of the building, and it really demonstrates how this building is being configured. You can see that at the ground level, which is the subterranean level, there is a parking structure that spans across the entire site, and that will provide parking for the replacement of the public space, as well as partially for the hotel, and the parking space goes up additional three levels for the commercial development. Above that, where you see the green, that is parking spaces for the residential exclusively, and then you can see that above that, that is where the majority of the residential units will be constructed for the 16-story building, with a total height of 194 feet. Moving to the left there, you see, again, the street with no development is going to be a convertible street that will allow for both pedestrian promenade and activity use, or when not in use, function as the valet and, and the connection. The hotel is 10 stories, and what you see in blue is going to be the parking configuration for both the ADA parking, as well as the lift parking spaces, there's also back-of-house use, and includes the lobby for the hotel. Above that, you'll see the hotel units, as well as outdoor amenities and patios. While the buildings are both 10- and 16-story in height, they're very iconic, and they're a part of the vision of what downtown is, this proposed development is going to be located, as I mentioned, in the heart of downtown, and the goal of downtown is to really create that iconic skyline building height, while being compatible with some existing environment, as well as the historical aspect of the surrounding areas. So, as you can see, the building took great care, the architect design took great care in terms of activating the street, using both the pedestrian promenade through the convertible street, but it also replicated what is existing around there, with glass windows storefronts, with large bulkheads, using stone and brickwork to help duplicate what's surrounding in the areas of the building, really continue the cadence of downtown, both in terms of pedestrian rhythm, as well as the activation, and visually, you can connect these two tall buildings to the ground level, and for the most part, for the pedestrian, that's what you can see, and that's why we took great care, working with the applicant, to address the pedestrian level, while still creating that iconic look for both the hotel and the residential tower. In reviewing the project, and evaluating the SEQA documentation for the project, it was determined that there are no new or substantial greater impact than what was to be occurred as, the proposed development, as compared to what was originally analyzed in the 2010 In reviewing this, we refer back to SEQA section 15-162, which dictates that under such condition, where no new substantial impact is being created through the project, a new EIR shall not be required. Based on the analysis of the project, it was believed, and we determined that an addendum was the appropriate document, to be documenting the SEQA analysis for this project. In addition to other comments that the city received, on October 20th, we received a comment letter representing Coalition Against Santa Ana Irresponsible Development, and then today, we received a letter representing United Here Local 11, both really raising the questions whether or not the addendum was the appropriate document to, to evaluate this, this project under SEQA, as well as the impact of the project, and whether or not those were adequately analyzed. To, to really restate this, staff and the SEQA consultant reviewed the letters, and we feel very confident that our existing analysis, as documented in your staff report, and, and the mitigation minority program, and what you're adopting tonight, adequately addresses the issues of the project under SEQA, as raised by both project. Again, the project, no new or substantial greater impact would occur with implementation of the proposed development, when compared to the 2010 EIR, and then, any changes to the future project, such as the conversion of, the potential conversion of the hotel into a residential development project, that, that's not being considered by the city council tonight. That is something that is potentially in the future, and if that is going to be the case, the applicant or the owner at the time would have to submit that development proposal to the city. It's not predetermined, it's only an opportunity, but it's not being considered tonight, so I want to make that very clear. You are considering the development agreement, as well as the site plan review and the addendum So, the project includes residential development, as part of the development, there are 19 low-income units, which will be 30%, 50% AMI, 10 of which will be studio, six one-bedroom, and three two-bedrooms. With the incorporation of the density bonus under state law, which I think it's SB 1818, approved in 2005, the project is entitled for a 35% density bonus, which, based on the lot size of 1.43 acres, they qualify for 127 units, with the 35% density bonus that works out to about 171 units. In addition to that, under state law, with the incorporation of affordable housing, they're able to qualify for reduction of the parking requirements. Based on state law, they're actually able to reduce all the way down to half a space per unit, whereas the project is being proposed, will provide one space per studio, one space per one-bedroom, and two space per two-bedroom, for 100, for total 196 parking spaces. In addition to the, the concession that is allowable, the project is also qualified for waivers under our development standards, under which the project is being analyzed for 4.2 FAR, instead, in place of 3.0 FAR. What that means is that for every square foot of land area they have, they're able to develop 4.2 square feet of usable or haveable space. In terms of the height waiver, there is a waiver of 16-story in, in comparison to the 10-story for the residential building, and this is because the site is relatively small in size, and in order to create the parking necessary for the project, and replace the public parking, as you saw, there are eight levels of parking before we can start the residential units, so therefore, this waiver is appropriate in order to provide the parking spaces necessary onsite for the public, for the development, as well as creating the residential opportunity. Another concession is the open space requirement, this is not because the project doesn't meet the open space, it actually exceeds the open space requirement, however, because it is located in a downtown, smaller block, the open space of being provided in a courtyard on the deck, instead of a forecourt, which is generally at street level. And additionally, there's a massing waiver, and the massing is being reduced from, or increased from 85% to 93%, as, again, the intent was a larger site, you have stepped back from the building, so that it creates for visual relief as the building goes taller, however, because of the size of the site, and based on the development criteria that are necessary, it's being proposed from 85% to 93%. So, with that, I would now hand back the presentation to Executive-
Mendoza?
Executive Director Mendoza. Thank you, man, very much. Up until this point, the city council is very familiar with entitlements, you see many projects that come your way, asking for variances, approvals, and/or site plan review. This time, you have a greater role in it, you actually own the property, and you're going to be a partner in the development. What establishes that that part, solidifies that partnership, is a disposition and development agreement. This disposition and development agreement, that's included in your pockets, in your packets, has many facets, it shares what the city's responsibilities are, the developer's responsibility, a performance schedule for both of us, hotel conversion option, but not the preapproval of that option, if the hotel underperforms after year two, a share of city profits should the project sell to a new developer, we made sure if he made money, the, the public was entitled to some, to share in that, in that proceeds as well. Public parking-related responsibilities, a process by which the 211- Public parking-related responsibilities, a process by which the 211 parking spaces could be sold in the future if desired and reciprocal access to retain access to those 211 parking spaces over his other parking spaces that are in the project and a community workforce agreement. So that is, that's a whole lot of information. So the city's responsibility are the demolition of the existing parking structure, site prep for the construction of the project, construction of 211 parking spaces, reconstruction of Sycamore as a private street, providing a public right-of-way, our donation of the land of $3 million and the estimated expenses of the public improvements. $6 million for public improvements, offsites and onsites, and then $7 million for the public parking is valued. And that comes up to $13 million. In my next slide, you'll see that the $13 million is not a gift. It's a debt that the city will have and that debt will be serviced by the developer, including any interest the city loses or spends in securing that debt. The developer's responsibilities is to process all entitlements, which he has done and you're, and that brings it to, in front of you tonight. He provides for the funding of the development. He has to be supplied with over $100 million to build this development, build all improvements, including public improvements, design and operate a hotel, manage and operate the public parking and fund all operating expenses, including the city's debt service on the $13 million that I mentioned in the other slide. Here's a sample of the performance schedule. The performance schedule is much lengthier than this. These are some of the highlights. The criteria for converting the hotel is represented in the DDA to ensure that it's followed. City participation in revenue is also delineated in the disposition and development agreement about the project being sold and the city's share. The city staff, city attorneys and also some consultants have been working very hard to ensure that the city council and the residents of Santa Ana are protected in this development. We described the parking operations in length in the disposition and development agreement and the purchase option for public parking should we want those 211 parking spaces to be sold. Even if they are sold, the disposition and development agreement requires them to remain public always, the 211. We also have provided the council with downtown parking inventory, so if you have questions on that, the walkability of other parking options during construction and in the future, and the project benefits. The estimated annual revenue we predict on this project, including property tax, hotel visitor tax, sales tax and utility tax, comes up to $337,000 per year and an estimated 510 construction jobs for the city. Again, we like to tout the community benefits. What is in it for the community to benefit from? 19 very low-income units right in the middle of downtown that you currently don't have. Publicly accessible spaces, hotel rooftop lounge, Sycamore Street and special event promenade, much like Third Street promenade between these two buildings. As we all know, you can't get over to Pizza Press without going around a large monstrous parking structure, correct? This connects downtown on the north from the south. 211 parking spaces in perpetuity and long-term jobs. And city tonight, tonight, city council, you will consider the addendum, which is the environmental document prior to making a decision on the density bonus agreements with concessions and waivers, site plan review applications and the disposition and development agreement that we outlined. With that, I want to thank all the people that helped bring this together, including my, my partner, Ben Thai, Mark Morley, Lisa Stiptovic, Judson Brown, Nabil Tagh, Vince Virgozo, Selena Calahar. Big round of applause for her bringing this today, our secret consultant, Bill Halligan, and our architect, Tobin White, and of course, our legal team led by Sonia Coverlo. With that, I'll turn it back over to the city council for any questions you may have of staff.
Thank you. Let me start off with a comment and then let's go around. I'm sure there'll be a lot of good comments. I just want to commend a lot of folks on this, but I will note that I believe, you know, the developer deserves a lot of credit because a project like this is very, very complicated. It involves a whole lot of moving parts and we've been at it for a long time. And not because we're slow or because we're, you know, taking too much time, just because of the very nature of the complexity of it all. This is complicated to do something like this. And I think at the end of the day, we have a lot of winners here and I, and I just want to thank, you know, staff because, you know, a lot of work has been done to get it to where it is. But I also want to point out the city manager in particular, because I believe when she came, you know, she took this project very seriously and started marshaling resources and, and it's made a real difference. And that's part of the reason why we are where we are today approving it. I believe it's going to change the downtown for the better. This is more than, you know, 1.6 acres or whatever it is. I know it's a relatively small lot. Because of where it is and the way it's realigning Sycamore and, and the vibrancy, the density, the activity, I, I think it's gonna, you know, you know, change so much of the downtown in a big way for the better. And because there's, you know, development not far from here, remember over on the First American site, which is right down the street on Ford Street, there's a very large development coming in from Toll Brothers, which is also going to invigorate the downtown. And of course, we have, you know, the streetcar. The streetcar is going to be right on Ford Street connecting, you know, downtown Santa Ana ultimately to the airport, to Disneyland and all that. And I think this is going to be an iconic project within Orange County. So with that, I want to ask the applicant if you would like to make any comment. And if not, I'll bring it to council for additional questions or comments. Any comments from the applicant? Seeing none, let me bring it back to council. Other comments from, from my colleagues on the city council, please.
Do we have public comments, Mr. Mayor?
All right, madam, I thought we had those already, didn't we?
No, not for public hearing, item 75A.
All right. I thought we were ready to vote last time, but then we, we had the comments and then we couldn't vote on it. But all right, let's go ahead. Let's do public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. For, before I opened up the line for the callers to speak, I did want to announce the emails that our office received for public hearing item 75A. We received 16 Santa Ana resident business owners in support for residency not disclosed and trade labor organizations. We received 22, all in support. In opposition, we received 60 Santa Ana residence business owners, two non-Santa Ana residents and one trade labor organization.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, caller with the last three numbers, 867. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon to unmute. Thank you. You may proceed. We're on items.
Good evening, council members. Good evening. Austin Lynch, organizing director with United Here Local 11, the Union of Hotel Workers. Our members believe that public lands belong in public hands and that the city should not give away public land. Hold on to your public land. They're precious and use them to build things that benefit taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 492. Please dial star six or select the microphone icon on your phone to unmute your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 492. Please dial star six to unmute your call. Callers with the last three numbers, 492. Thank you. You've successfully unmuted your call. Please proceed with your comment for item 75A.
Good evening. Just to clarify, is this the item about the hotel and parking structure conversion?
On Third and Broadway.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I did want to leave some comments just because I understand there's a lot of excitement for this new development, you know, in converting, you know, our rundown parking structure into something that could bring a lot of traffic and a lot of vibrancy to our community. However, I do believe that this project is a little overstated where it might, you know, drop the balance of our community and it might draw attention away from, you know, some of our more historical sites. You know, just the mere size of it and, you know, the height of it, I would probably recommend maybe just turning, toning down the residential units and maybe just utilizing a much smaller scale because it sounds like a lot of parking is needed to, you know, be able to meet all the needs of the businesses and the residential and hotel. Also, one person did bring up a really good point earlier in the concern for the amount of involvement that Caribou Industries has within our city. It is a little concerning to hear, you know, just how many, how much income they do have in our project. And, you know, I would encourage our council members to consider other, other development partners within our city. Thank you very much for your time and I yield back my time.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 444. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon. Please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, good evening, council. My name is Fede Moreno and I am a longtime resident of the city of Santa Ana. So I just come with concern in regards to the parking because I do understand that our downtown area is very vibrant in different times of the year, such as the Adelos Martos, such as the different holidays that come about and the different shows. And when life goes back to normal, I know that the Santa Ana 5K will be very vibrant again. So that is my main concern because I feel that we're giving, we're giving up a lot of public land, especially obviously public parking to, to a developer when these, when these public structures are constantly being filled at different times of the year. And so I just feel a bit concerned that it will lead to more of a parking crisis in downtown area. And then as well, when we have hotel residents and then residential individuals in the, in both facilities, they will have guests and they will have family members visit them, of course. And so you'll, you will also have to take that into consideration. And so I feel that it's just going to bring a lot more traffic downtown. I know it's good for development. It will bring in a lot of tax dollars. However, I feel that a parking structure for what we have is, we can't just take it for granted. I know parking structures are very expensive to construct. I know Santa Ana College has been wanting to construct one for so long, but it's just way too expensive. And so please consider that in your decision and thank you for letting me speak and take care.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 010. Please dial star six to unmute your call.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, this is Dick Mendez. I live about a half block north of the proposed project site. So let me first state, I think this is a very good development on balance. But I echo a lot of concerns that some of the residents are in terms of, you know, post-construction impact and even construction impact. You know, according to the staff's own numbers, it's going to take about, it's going to take about seven, hello? Hello?
We can hear you. You've made the scene.
Yeah, I, it's going to take about 17 and a half years for the city to recoup its investment. These are staff numbers. These aren't made up and I really would think staff and the city's account would really go back and receive that and see what they can do a lot better. 17 and a half years on a, a recouping investment is a pretty darn long time. I think the affordable housing allocation is kind of scrawny for all the impact this is going to cause and all the, you know, kind of the cost to the community. And there is a cost, not necessarily direct or financially, but there's a cost communities to more density, traffic, et cetera. And I think let's go back and revisit that 10% affordable housing allotment. Lastly, I hope the city and the developer really get together and propose a construction impact approach to this project with the trolley project going on and this project going on pretty close concurrently. This seems going to be, we're going to have traffic and dust and noise coming out of our ears. I certainly don't want to go through the experience I had with the city contractor about a year ago when they start jack having the sewer mains at 3:00 in the morning right in front of my residence. I think we can do a lot better than that. Let's just be smart about this. Let's be intelligent about this. Let's really look at what we're really trying to do. I think staff did a good job of the rosy scenario and there's some good things in there, but when you start throwing behind here, there's a lot to consider. And this project, you know, could go wrong very easily and, you know, it could be, it could turn pretty negative. So please watch out, be diligent and be appro, and be appropriate with, with the resources that are going to be granted during this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 273. Please dial star six to unmute your call.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and executive staff. My name is Ernesto Medrano. And I'm the Orange County representative for the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. And we represent 140,000 hardworking men and women from our 49 affiliated trade organizations. I'm calling to urge the city council to approve the staff recommendation, which includes the density bonus agreement and the disposition development agreement on the Third and Broadway project. The project will create hundreds of high-wage, high-school construction jobs and these jobs have a significant multiplier effect on other jobs in the area. And at a time of an economic recession due to the pandemic, the timing to get shovels in the ground is imperative. The revenue it will bring to the city will help maintain the critical services that the municipal team provides. The Building Trades Council are going to talk with Mr. Mike Hara, the developer, to achieve a community workforce agreement that will provide the project with a skilled and trained workforce, strong safety enhancement for the construction workers. And the project, the project will provide a pathway to the middle-class opportunities for not just Santa Ana, but the entire region. We'll have young men and women and take them out of poverty and put them on the pathway to the middle class. We'll create the man to create young men and women to our joint labor management apprenticeship programs. And by the way, last week was National Apprenticeship Week throughout the country. The project will also support veterans for our Heil Mr. Hardhats program. And the quality union jobs creator will have great healthcare and defined retirement plans. The Third and Broadway project will have access to the Orange County streetcar route so that the guests, residents and community can get out of their cars and help the environment and alleviate traffic. The project is in the nearby cultural attractions like the Artist Village Civic Center and the recently revived downtown Santa Ana with its nearby galleries, restaurants, craft breweries and the street art. It is a perfect project for the area as currently it is just a parking lot. We, with all of the trades and various employers, sent in numerous letters and addressed the planning commission several weeks ago. So again, we urge the city council to approve this project. Thank you for your hard work and service to the great city of Santa Ana. Good evening.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 243. Please dial star six to unmute your call. Thank you. Please state your name for the record. You may proceed to speak.
Yes, of course. My name is Luis Andres Perez. I'm a representative for UA Local 582 Plumbers and Steamfitters. Here to make a public comment on the actual public hearing for the Third and Broadway development. I think as a whole, the council recognizes the direction of this positive development. I think it's a complete development with having affordable housing, our residential units and still maintaining the actual integrity of public parking lots and the individual stations themselves. I think this is a great deal. And even within the hotel development, having the inclusion to lay grounds for having positive benefits or at least in the financial aspects of flipping it. I know earlier we had a public comment about, you know, the city having to make a profit within 15 years. Well, most buildings stick around for 60 or 70, so 15 years is a short, you know, tailspond around the hole. So as a whole, with the urgency of approving and moving forward on the development, I think it's, it does everything it needs to do from construction all the way through completion. I think this is the right move in the right direction for the development and the future of. for the development and the future of Santa Ana. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 868. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and you may proceed to speak.
Yes, hi. My name is Indore Ortiz. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm speaking today on behalf of Latino House Actus in opposition to this item. Our goal at LHA, as you are aware, is to facilitate opportunities for residents to take ownership of their wellbeing, including by participating civically in decisions that affect their health. We believe that residents know best the solutions that work for their community and we have heard the community express those needs to the city, which is why we are concerned with the actions proposed under item 75A in today's agenda. The proposed plan for a hotel and a majority luxury residential building is far from what the residents have been advocating for. We urge you to oppose the actions under this item for a couple of reasons. One, although the environmental impact report for this project concluded that there will be no direct displacement as a result, we have seen the impact that this type of revitalization has had on neighboring neighborhoods surrounding the downtown area like Lacey and Willards and eventually the city as a whole. This project, like others that are meant to attract people from outside the city, will only contribute to the gentrification we've been seeing happening in the last years and drive existing residents out. The second reason, the proposed plans include residential, a residential building that would only dedicate 11% of the units to low-income residents in exchange for a density bonus, leaving the majority of the units at market rate cost, which we know our community cannot afford. This plan prioritizes, prioritizes the opposite of what the community has been asking for, which is affordable housing. And finally, with the item as is, the city would be supporting the developer very much by providing the land and $13 million for the preparation of the land for an economic investment of very high risk, as is the hotel during a pandemic. With Santa Ana being one of the cities most impacted by COVID, the city's priorities for any public spending or debt should be on addressing the current effects of the pandemic as well as for the long-term economic recovery that will, that would directly benefit the city's residents. And this project does not address either of these. For those reasons, we urge you to oppose item 75A as is proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 361. Please dial star six to unmute your call. State your name for the record and you may proceed.
Hi, I'm John Hannah. I'm representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and we are in strong support of this project. This is a sign of the times that the city of Santa Ana realizes that you need some modern tools to improve the quality of life and increase revenues for the city. So the old way would be, and let's recognize what was there. It's not just a parking structure. It's an antiquated, dangerous, filthy parking structure that kind of blocks off the, the north and the south part of downtown. So the old way to deal with this would be tear it down and build a new one, spend $8 million of the taxpayer funds to just build another parking structure. Instead, we've got, we have to commend the city manager and staff and Mike Hara of Caribou who really should be commended and not questioned for this kind of project for the city and building the public-private partnerships, which minimizes public risk while continuing to maintain a, a public presence. This isn't a giveaway. This is basically saying, what we had there is just not productive. It's dangerous and it's, and we can do much better. So it is much better. I want to join in the comments of Ernesto Medrano of the LA Orange County Building Trades Council. This, and to commend him and, and Mike Hara of Caribou for realizing that what one speaker said, the wellbeing of the community is being considered. These, this agreement for the workforce will ensure instead of being paid sub-minimum wages in many cases by construction crews, which I don't hear much about from people, some of the people who comment on this, instead, these will be well-paid people who will have benefits and there will be a local hire component to it. That's what we need to start focusing on when we start talking about development projects. And this developer, unlike many who come to the city council, voluntarily agreed to have that local hire component with a skilled and trained workforce. That developer should be commended for this. But that's not the only public benefit for this. We have a hotel for, for people who will be coming in and whether it's lawyers in the federal court or it's state appellate court, who will be here for a long time, or businesses, that they will have an opportunity to stay in Santa Ana, spend their money here instead of going to Anaheim or Costa Mesa. There's a lot of public projects that people want. Folks, it takes money and let's, let's capture the money of people who come into Santa Ana rather than just have them come in and leave. I think this project will actually reduce vehicular traffic because as Mr. Medrano talked about and the staff did, we're going to have a rail line in, a trolley line into this area. We're going to have people now that it's opening up the north and the south of the downtown who will want to come in, live here in this area and will actually be avoiding having to have a car. And that's, that kind of futuristic design, I think, is to be commended. There are public benefits for this. This is a great public-private partnership. I strongly urge on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters that the City Council support this project.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 687. Please dial star six or select the unmute microphone. Caller with the last three numbers, 687. Thank you. You successfully unmuted yourself. Please state your name for the record. You may proceed.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Fency Longford. I'm the Southwest Regional Manager for Helmets to Hard Hats and I would just like to speak to the project. My role with Helmets to Hard Hats is intradating transitioning service members, observers and national barthman into the building trades careers. I feel that this project would be an excellent project for Santa Ana veterans to gain an opportunity to get meaningful employment as well as to become a future homeowner within the city.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 372. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute option.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Alfonso Ruiz. I'm a longtime resident and proud member of the Local Five Insulators Union and I'm calling in support of item 75A. I'd like to start by saying that I truly believe that the approval of this project and more projects like this are essential to the future of Santa Ana and its residents. It will modernize and revitalize the city with much-needed housing and commercial opportunities that Santa Ana will benefit for decades to come. But as usual, the benefits that would come from this project have been well and clearly stated, so I'd like to expand a little more on veterans. With veterans today less than a week behind us and still on a lot of our minds, I'd like to take the time to focus on them for a moment and thank them much more for their service and sacrifice. With that said, deserving of all the kind words and praise they have received over the week and this evening, they deserve more. With the veteran unemployment rate at close to double of what it was this time last year, they deserve action. And to the approval of this project and the Helmets to Hard Hats program that is baked into the scope, we have the opportunity to take action, to say thank you, to say we got your back now, to not only tell them we care, but to show them we care and give them valuable access to retraining, high-skilled, high-paying jobs that give them the support they need. This is truly a win-win for everyone involved. So please, once more, I urge the City Council to join me and my fellow union members and approve the staff recommendation for the Third and Broadway project and help our residents and veterans get the support they deserve. Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 720. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Ray Baca. I am the Executive Director for the Engineering Contractors Association, representing infrastructure contractors and suppliers throughout the region. I'm here tonight in support of the Third and Broadway project. This project will enhance the appeal of the entire area with a well-thought-out set of priorities that have been detailed by earlier callers. It will also provide high-wage and safe construction career opportunities for local area workers as well as future job opportunities for other local area residents. As leaders in the construction industry and with our many partners in, in labor, we wish to express appreciation for your hard work and respectfully urge your continued support for the Third and Broadway project. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 070. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone from your phone.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Terramina and I just wanted to tell you that this project is an example of a magnet. A magnet meaning that I am looking and others are looking to make investments in Santa Ana. And this is a perfect example of progressive, positive and constructive thinking and risk sharing on the part of the private and public sector. This project being a magnet for myself and others to put our investment in Santa Ana away from other cities because they don't think like Santa Ana thinks. You should all be very proud of this project, support it wholeheartedly and know that it's going to bring many jobs and great improvements to the area. And again, attract, like a magnet, others to bring more money into the city. I thank Mike Hara and your staff for an outstanding negotiation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 520. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon on your phone.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, my name is Roy Acia. I'm with Spinker Fitters, Local 709. I'm a 19-year resident of Santa Ana. I raised three kids here. Love Santa Ana. This project is the perfect project, perfect place and the perfect time to build it. I think with Mike Hara, Hara, he's done a great job. He did his homework. He talked to the right people. He did, he went through all, all the steps to do it. This is the perfect place with the veterans. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
With the veterans, it's for the veterans who are benefited from that too. And then with the local hire, the community is going to get, is going to benefit from that too. So this is the perfect project, perfect time, perfect place to build it. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 047. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon. Thank you. You may proceed.
Yes, hi. This is Diane Fradkin, 28-year resident of Santa Ana. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I think this is a very exciting project. I really think the city needs to look at more redevelopment. I do have a couple of comments to make in regards to the height and the architecture of the structure. I think it hasn't really taken into consideration the historic value of our downtown Santa Ana. And I think that maybe there's maybe some tweaks and some fixes that could be made to make it more accommodating to the historic nature of our city. 16 stories, I understand you have to go up because the footprint's so small to accommodate the 171 units. It just seems like it's a little excessive. I do like the fact that there is at least some affordable housing units. I think that's great. Another concern has to do with the ongoing high-density projects as it relates to the open space and park space. We continue to have this issue. We approve high-density projects without enough open space, park space dedication. New parks can't be put into areas that are already developed. So that is a concern we need to fix. I think we're going to hopefully do that for the general plan update. But given the post-COVID environment that we have, we need to be understanding of how everybody's going to be able to self-quarantine if necessary. And we just need more open spaces to do that. In a global comment that has to do with redevelopment, number one, I think the project needs to be viable. We don't want to try to approve something just to approve it. It needs to be able to be constructed and inhabited to be successful so that everybody can recoup their money. So I think that's also important given the economics of the environment today. I'd love to see more adaptive reuse where we can provide more affordable housing units for downtown and basically convert office space to residential use without having to do new construction, without having to go and build in a new spot. So we're creating an environment that is using the existing space that we have. I think that's environmentally good.
Fifteen seconds left.
For the general, for the general plan update, I think we need to have a vision here of how we want to redevelop our downtown area. And although this is a good project, I think we need to consider how we want to plan this future and not just approve everything that comes before us.
Thank you.
So I, I want you to have thoughtful considerations for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 197. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone icon.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. My name is Brian Jermaine. I'm a Santa Ana resident for a little over 15 years. I'm also speaking here tonight in the capacity of a union member of the sheet metal workers here in Southern California. I'm also speaking in favor, for favor of this project, but also for my brothers and sisters. Within my organization, there's about 40, 45 families that live here in the city of Santa Ana that are part of the sheet metal organization. I urge council to support this project because this project is definitely a standout project. The, the consideration to take something that's existing and, and is coming to its end of its life as a parking structure and re-transforming that into something more viable. It's going to spruce up that area as, as I have been in that area before. Looking at the option of parking on, parking on the street or going into that parking structure, I chose to park on the street. Just seemed a little bit safer than going into that parking structure. It is relatively lit, dim-litting.
Thank you. Caller with the, with Zoom ID, excuse me, Katerina Birch, please. Caller with the, with Zoom ID, excuse me, Katerina Birch, please select your unmute feature from your device.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Hi, my name is Katerina Birch, and I am a research intern at Unite Here Local Eleven, the Hospitality Workers Union, as well as a student of Urban and Environmental Policy at Occidental College. I urge you to reconsider giving away one point four acres of public land and millions of dollars in subsidies in this time of crisis. Public land is a precious resource in Southern California that should be used for the good of all. The city of Santa Ana owes it, owes it to its residents and taxpayers to fight for the public good and get as many benefits as possible from the land in the heart of its downtown. Please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID, Jonah Brezla, please select the unmute feature from your device.
Hi, my name is Jonah Brezla. I am speaking tonight as a research analyst at Lain, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, and we are an advocacy organization focused on ensuring that Southern California's economy works for all working families. And I agree wholeheartedly with the representatives of Unite Here Local Eleven and Latino Health Access. Public land should be used for the public good, and this project, which involves millions of dollars of public subsidies, does not provide the kinds of public benefits that I know are possible from genuinely effective public-private partnerships. We've seen it in cities like Santa Monica, where cities have utilized their public land to promote development that provides far more affordable housing units, much more open space, and better opportunities. And I believe that this city can, can also advocate for far more from developers than is being offered by, by this deal. And so we urge you to continue to fight for all the benefits that can be gained from this piece of public land and the millions of dollars of public resources that would support this development. So please, I urge you to vote no tonight on this agreement, to go back to the drawing board, and to fight for all of the resources that Santa Ana deserves in this moment of crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID, Paul Moreno, please select the unmute feature on your device.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem and council members. My name is Paul Moreno, and I'm with the Ironworkers, Local 433, and I'm calling in support of, you know, Agenda Item Seventy-five A. You know, we have a, Ironworkers, you know, I work in a partnership with the Welding Technology Department over at Santa Ana College, and these are the projects right here where we can take our graduates from, from the welding department in Santa Ana at the college and give them the opportunity to work right here at home. And, and these pathways are what we need to, to give, you know, the residents this opportunity to, for their careers. We also have the MC Three program through the Building Trades at Santa Ana College, and again, you know, these, these are the jobs that put, you know, the local residents from Santa Ana to work. So besides our members who reside in Santa Ana, you know, we would love to have them work here at home instead of having to commute, but the biggest thing that excites me about projects like these, and especially with the Community Workforce Agreement, is, you know, taking these students, male, you know, and female, right from the local college and putting them to work right here in their backyard, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID, Jordan Sisson, please select the unmute feature on your device.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jordan Sisson. I'm a Sequoia Land Use Attorney, speaking on behalf of Local Eleven, who has some serious concerns about this project's FAR density calculations. These concerns were expressed in a comment letter sent earlier today that included expert comments from a land use planner. Before I begin, I just want to first thank Madam City Attorney for speaking with us earlier today about these concerns. We really do appreciate that time. As explained in our letter today, the project here is receiving FAR, height, and parking and other waivers based on improper density calculations. Without getting bogged down on the details, in short, the project calculates its base dwelling units, which is ninety dwelling units per acre, across the entire one point four acre site. Yet, it ignores the fact that a hotel uses roughly a third of the site. This is fundamentally inconsistent with the city's general plan for mixed-use projects. If properly calculated, this project would be entitled only one hundred thirteen dwelling units. That's inclusive of the bonus affordable units. Yet, the project is getting one hundred seventy-one dwelling units with a free seventy-five-room hotel, which ultimately short-changes the city of affordable units. Additionally, as we expressed in our letter, you know, the waivers granted for height, FAR, massing, and parking relief is really unnecessary here, given the dwelling units could be accommodated on the hotel site. So too, the parking could be provided in subterranean levels. However, the subsidy report relied upon by the city is entirely silent why the hotel project is financially necessary here to provide for the affordable, the affordable housing units. It simply does not square. Furthermore, as referenced earlier, the hotel could be converted into residential use if the hotel's not financially viable in five years. This alone suggests the hotel is not financially necessary to make the affordable units feasible. It also prejudices the city's ability to impose project changes and mitigations in the future. This is not a complex issue. We all know that once the project is built, options will be limited for the city. You know, in some, all these issues here regarding this project ultimately means less affordable units for the city. Local Eleven desperately wants to work with the city to resolve these issues. To this end, we respectfully urge the body to continue the matter until the city has an opportunity to address our comment letter. Let staff, let this honorable body digest those comments and really give it a fair airing. As highlighted in an earlier item discussed tonight.
Fifteen seconds left.
Project approvals can place the city on the hook for litigation costs, and nobody wants that here, especially Local Eleven. Please provide a brief pause so the city can work with Local Eleven to address these issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, and entire hard-working staff for your time tonight. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Lorena, usted puede hacer su comentario de tema de audiencia pública?
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Lorena Palacios. Hevivido en Santa Ana por diecisiete años. Trabajo en la industria hotelera como housekeeper. No deberíamos proporcionar millones en subsidios, subsidios. Me opongo a la cesión de nuestros terrenos públicos en Tercera y Broadway. Este proyecto podría ser muy diferente. Podría alquilarse para obtener ingresos a largo plazo o usarse para algo que realmente beneficia a los residentes. Ahora mismo nuestra ciudad está sufriendo. Estamos enfrentando COVID y una crisis de vivienda. Necesitamos recursos. Por favor, vote no. Gracias.
Now, we will have the translator who will be speaking.
My name is Lorena Palacios, and I've been a resident of Santa Ana for seventeen years. I work in the hotel industry as in housekeeping, and I don't agree with giving millions of dollars in subsidies to developers. I oppose giving this money. We could use this project for, this money for other, this land for other projects that will give us long-term income, that would be better for the residents of Santa Ana. The city's suffering with, with COVID now, with a housing crisis, so I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID, Jones.
City council members, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is Ada Tamayo-Jones. I am an organizer with Unite Here Local Eleven. I represent many workers that live in the city of Santa Ana, and they urge you to vote no to the giving away of the public lands. This project will benefit just a group of workers, but not the community as a whole. Public land is a precious resource. Keep it in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID, Carla Juarez.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carla Juarez. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana in opposition of Seventy-five A. The reason why I'm in opposition is because the jobs that, that we, you know, trying to promote with this, they're not guaranteed that they're going to go to Santa Ana residents. The housing, that it's very little compared to, like, the whole, is not guaranteed that it's going to go to Santa Ana residents. And also, the money that's going to come, I think Santa Ana has an issue with our budget. I don't think selling our public land is the best thing to do in order to get money. If we have an issue with money, then we need to look at our budget and see where we can cut funds, especially since a lot of it goes to the police department. I think we could cut funds there first. And I'm concerned that Mike Hera, Cariboo Industries, has a lot involved with Santa Ana development. So to name some, I guess the YMCA, which, we gave it away as much as the house, our house parties, anyways, the Orange County School of Arts, Original Likes, and there's also others that are currently in the works, and I'm trying to look for that. But, I mean, that should raise the red flag. I honestly think that it would be more beneficial to the people around that area to have just a green land or like a green space instead of anything like luxury homes, because they won't be able to afford to live in there, or go to the hotels. Like, public land is meant to be a public benefit. Having luxury homes is not a public benefit. Having a hotel is not a public benefit. If we're doing it to get the money, then we should look at our budget and cut our costs or cut on our budget and not sell our public land. And also, it's already been shown that the areas around there have, many families have been displaced because the rent has gone up, and because La Cuatro is not La Cuatro anymore. Downtown Santa Ana or downtown Orange County is not La Cuatro anymore. Many families have been displaced, and, I mean, we won't forget that because it still hurts. We already bought the Monorail, I meant, the OC Streetcar. Like, we need to, Santa Ana residents have the solution, and the city council members that have been elected to be there is to voice the residents of Santa Ana and not make your own decisions.
Fifteen seconds left.
Based on your own interest. Remember, we don't want career politicians. We want someone that is there for the residents. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Zoom caller ID with Maria Rodriguez, please dial your unmute on your Zoom webinar. Maria Rodriguez, we can, you have successfully muted your call. You may proceed to speak.
Sí, me oyes.
Sí, usted puede hacer su comentario.
Mi nombre es, tengo viviendo en Santa Ana más de veinticinco años. Trabajo de recamadera en la cadena hotelera. Ahora mismo nuestra ciudad está sufriendo. Estamos enfrentando el COVID y una crisis de vivienda necesita, una crisis de vivienda. Necesitamos recursos para la comunidad, no a la sección de terrenos públicos que pertenecen a los contribuyentes como parte y, y tendencia de los comestibles y el consejo. No deberíamos ceder nuestros terrenos a un desarrollo para construir, para construir cadenas hoteleras. Muchas gracias.
Now, the translator will translate that.
My name is Maria Rodriguez. I've been a resident of Santa Ana for twenty-five years. I work in the hotel industry, and the city is suffering currently with COVID, and we are experiencing a housing crisis. We don't need to commit our resources to, we need our community resources. We do not need to give them, to give our public land to, to other people. Don't give our land to developers to build hotel chains.
Zoom ID for Reina Gonzalez, please select the unmute feature on your device.
Persona en el, con la llamada, Reina Gonzalez, por favor, marque el micrófono para reactivar su llamada.
Buenas noches.
Sí, mi nombre es Reina Gonzalez, y vivo en Santana, California, y trabajo en el aeropuerto del John Wayne por veinte años. Ahora mismo nuestra ciudad está sufriendo. Estamos enfrentando el COVID y una crisis de vivienda. Necesitamos recursos para la comunidad, no a la sección de terrenos públicos. Los terrenos públicos pertenecen a los contribuyentes y deben usarse para construcciones como parques y tiendas de comestibles, o deben adquirir el terreno para tener recursos a largo tiempo, de largo plazo. El consejo no debería ceder nuestra tierra. Por favor, vote no. Gracias por su tiempo y por ponernos su atención. Muchas gracias a todos, a todos ustedes por ponernos atención. Buenas noches.
Gracias.
My name is Reina Gonzalez, and I'm a Santa Ana resident. I work in the hotel, I work in John Wayne Airport for twenty years. The city's suffering with COVID and with a housing crisis. We need to keep our community resources, not cede them to, cede our public land to people that this belongs to the taxpayers to build parks, to build stores, to build some, something that is going to give us long-term resources. The city council should not give the land away. Please vote no. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Next caller with Zoom ID, Rick Vazquez, please select the unmute device on your device or the microphone on your device. Rick Vazquez, please select the microphone or the unmute feature on your device. Rick Vazquez, please select the unmute feature on your device. Zoom ID caller, Rick Vazquez, UA Local Seven Oh Nine. UA Local 709. Hi, you've successfully unmuted your call. Go ahead and, you may proceed to speak. Rick Vazquez, you have successfully unmuted your call. Please proceed to speak. Rick Vazquez. You have, you have successfully unmuted your device. Please proceed with your comment. Caller with Zoom ID Thomas Drennan. Please select the microphone to unmute your device. Caller with Zoom ID Thomas Drennan. Please select the microphone or the unmute feature on your device. Thomas Drennan, IUOE Local 12. Please select the unmute feature on your device. Caller with the last three numbers, 752. Please select star six or your microphone on your device to unmute your call. Caller with the last three numbers, 752. Oh, you've successfully unmuted your call.
Yes, just have a private comment to be viewed.
Sorry, I could not make, I could not understand what you said. Could you repeat that? Okay, Mayor, that's all the callers we have.
All right. I think that last speaker said he didn't need to comment. That's what I understood. So, given that, let me bring it back to council. But of course, as I was saying right there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If there's nothing else, public hearing is closed, then I'll bring it to council for consideration. And I'd like to, you know, take the chair prerogative on this one and make a motion to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second? And then we'll comment.
I will second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Comments from council members?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Becerra. I just want to thank staff for the hard work that they've done. I know that this has been a very long and challenging process, and I want to applaud their efforts on this. I think this is going to be a great, you know, just shot in the arm for downtown Santa Ana. I think that, you know, one thing I want to ask staff is as we see more of these projects, you know, what I really like is that, you know, especially since COVID, we, as Southern Californians, we are blessed with such beautiful weather. And, you know, we celebrate it, but we, I don't think we really celebrated it enough. And here we are with these structures that we're bringing in, with the rooftop amenities. And I just hope that as we see more of these projects come through, that we have more of them with this type of amenity. I think that the architecture on here is bold. I think it really stands out. And for a capital city like Santa Ana is and such a county like Orange County, I think that this is the type of project we do want to see. And it's a great public-private partnership. And I, for one, will not be sad to see that parking structure go. It definitely was something, I think maybe we'd want to invite the kids from UCI to study as far as the science of it, as far as how it worked. But going forward, I would like to think that what will replace it will be spectacular, and I think it will be a great addition to our downtown. So with that, I'll be supporting the motion to approve.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments, council members?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Jose Solario.
Wait, go ahead.
Thank you. I liked what College Trustee Hannah said. You know, when we talk about we're giving away public land, the reality is it's not really available land. It's a very old antiquated parking structure that divides the downtown, that's dark, that has many known issues with it. And it would cost millions to improve that at city taxpayer expense. Instead, we see a very good public-private partnership that really has been vetted over the past seven years. So there's no rush to judgment on this. And I think every year, slowly but surely, the project actually got better. And so this, particularly as we get ready to start another unfortunate COVID season, you know, this is a great time to seize this opportunity. We're going to get housing, including affordable housing. We're going to get a hotel. We're going to get more revenue for city services. We're also going to get construction jobs as well as permanent ongoing jobs. And as more of our families are worried about, rightfully so, not just the public health aspect of COVID, but the economics of it, you know, having these jobs would be good. I'm pleased, and I know I've been talking to Mr. Mike Herr over the years about the importance of community workforce agreements. And the city has taken a lot of leadership in that. And I'm very pleased that there's been that commitment on this project. I know that hotel and restaurant workers apparently have some SEQA complaints or concerns. But I would suggest to them that if a hotel gets built, there will be hotel and restaurant jobs. If this project does not get built, there will not be hotel and restaurant worker jobs there. So let's just keep working on this to make it a better project. And I think at the end of the day, that's what they're looking for as well. And so I'm mindful of that. I do want to thank our city manager, Christine Ridge, because Mayor Polito is correct. Early on, this was one of the projects that we had, you know, revived and worked on to make it better. And she led that team with bringing in outside resources and internal staff now. And really do want to thank, you know, Christina for that, you know, Judson, Steve, Men, obviously, and everybody else involved. And then I want to give a special thanks and recognition to Mike Herr. I know sometimes it's easy to pick on the developers. But you know what? I was here in the years where the downtown was dead. Nothing was going on. No one would invest. No one would turn around old buildings. And he did a number of things. You know, he did, you know, Original Mikes, you know, OSHA, restored the Masonic Temple, a number of projects. And really through that, he's helped many families and children realize their dreams right here in Santa Ana. And he continues to do good work. This is not an easy project. So I wish him and the staff well in moving this forward. But I do think on the whole, this is, this will be a great addition to the downtown. And again, I'd rather do a public-private partnership like this rather than, you know, invest millions of dollars just to, just to fix an old parking structure with no additional value. With that, I'm very enthusiastically in support of this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those comments. Other comments, council members?
Think we need a roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Correct, correct. But let me make a couple of comments, and I'll call for the vote. If I could do this 20 times over, I would. What are we really doing here? We're taking 1.4 acres. It's really a very small amount of land. We're not going to turn into a park. It's got a parking structure on it, a parking structure that currently does not work. And what are we doing? We're developing a modern parking structure, bringing in more retail in the downtown, bringing a hotel that we all hope is going to work, and I believe it will. And I think it's going to reposition the downtown. Again, I think we're giving nothing up. We're giving up a piece of land that would be a burden if we were to do something like this. And we're getting a developer through a private-public partnership to invest hundreds of millions of dollars. By the end of the day, this project is going to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. It's going to redefine the downtown. Again, if we could do this over and over and over again, we should. And especially with a streetcar coming down the street. I hope when Broadway Plaza becomes a reality, it will complement all those projects and redefine, you know, the downtown in a very positive light. So with that, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
No.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potemvegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, so congratulations to the developer and to the city staff and to everybody. Wait and watch it get built. It'll be a great, great project. So with that, what's the next item, Madam City Clerk?
Public hearing, item 75B.
Okay, I now open up the public hearing on item 75B. And I invite the staff to make a presentation. And do we have speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
We do have three. And then before hearing the callers, there was only one protest submitted representing 5% of the total assessment. And the city requires 51% of the total assessment protest. Therefore, it was not a majority protest.
Okay. Just a quick question for the city attorney. Should I abstain on this, Madam Attorney, due to the muffler shop over on, on First Street?
Mayor, I don't know how far away that shop is from the project, but you have always participated. And I don't have any reason to believe that you would have an actual conflict.
All right. All right, let's participate then. Let's proceed. Can we have staff a presentation, please? And then we'll take the three comments.
Certainly, Mayor. We do have a presentation prepared, if you need it. As this item is to conduct the public hearing and as reported by the city clerk, there is not a majority protest for it. So the action that staff is recommending that you take is to adopt the resolution confirming the establishment of the Santa Ana Tourism Marketing District, of course, after you've taken public input.
All right. Let's hear from the three speakers, please.
Okay, before opening up the calls, I'd like to announce that we did receive emails. We received two in support from the Chamber of Commerce and Orange County Business Council and one in opposition, the protests submitted by Best Western plus Orange County Airport North. And with that, we did lose one of the callers. So with the caller with the last three numbers, 435, if you would please dial star six or select the microphone to unmute your call from your device.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed with your comment.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Jonathan Mayer, and I represent Main Place Mall. Our roughly 170 businesses. I'm also on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I'm the co-chair of the Economic Development Council for Santa Ana. You know, this item, 75B, which is the creation of the Tourism and Marketing District, is an initiative of the Santa Ana Economic Development Council. So, I mean, I don't think, I need to go into much detail because it sounds like we're good to go. We have over half, over the majority of the hotels already on board. And I think everybody understands how important this is to the city, to help the image of the city, to help the business of the city. And, you know, coming out of this global pandemic to really help, you know, the hotels increase occupancy. So I just wanted to, you know, chime in here and say that the business community is fully supportive of this. And we definitely appreciate the support of the council as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 994. Please dial star six to unmute your call or select the microphone from your device.
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed with your comment.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, David Elliott, President CEO of your Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce. I couldn't agree more with Jonathan who had just shared. You know, we've been working on this project for well over two years. I do want to thank Mark Morley and Jonathan and Jason Cure, who was the other person on the call a couple hours ago. But he's one of our general, our general managers of the, one of our hotels, the Doubletree, had an emergency, so he had to get off the call. One of the things I just wanted to share with you that is something that we just kind of recently, in preparation for the possibility of the district being approved, we started talking to our, some of our general managers of our hotels, especially our top six revenue-producing hotels about being on the Board of Directors for the district if it's approved. And what I'm excited to say is that of the six that we asked, all six have agreed to, if the, if the resolution is passed and we have the establishment of the Santa Ana Tourism Marketing District, that all six of them would serve on this Board of Directors starting in January. So besides dealing with their own self-assessment of the district, they're willing to put time and energy into making the district something that's very, very important for the city of Santa Ana. So we wanted to share that with you tonight as well. And I did want to make a comment. For Councilmember Mendoza and Councilmember Villegas, thank you both for your service to our country, to our city. Just want to thank you for just, and your comments. And I think, Councilmember Mendoza, I think you're going to be speaking with our chamber board on Thursday morning. I hope you'll talk a little bit about your, your work as a public servant, but also your service to our country as an Army veteran as well. With that, I will close and just say we hope that you will approve this tonight, and we can move forward in 2021 with a new program. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID.
Madam Clerk?
I think I may have one more. Caller with Zoom ID Carla Juarez. Please select star six or unmute your call. Did you want to speak on item 75B?
Oh, I would have put it in the comments. I think the comments were lost.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. Let me close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, motion to approve? Second.
Thank, thank you for that. I think you have two seconds there. So hopefully, there's a lot of enthusiasm for this. I think it is going to be great for the city. And I want to commend the Chamber of Commerce in particular for, you know, for pushing such a strong initiative. And obviously, the business community as well. So if there's no more comments, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Potemvegas?
Yes.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Motion carries, 70.
Our next item, Madam Clerk, is that ADA or what's our next item?
It's the Special Housing Authority Meeting.
Right, that's ADA.
ADA, correct.
All right, let me now bring the Housing, Special Housing Authority Meeting to order. Roll call vote, please. I mean, a roll call.
Authority Member Becerra?
Here.
Authority Member Mendoza?
Here.
Authority Member Peñalosa?
Present.
Authority Member Sarmiento?
Here.
Authority Member Solorio?
Present.
Vice Chair Vegas?
Present.
Chair Pulido?
I am here as well. Do we have any public comment for the authority?
We do not have any public comments.
We don't have an excused absence. Do we have any action?
We do not.
All right, so if we have no action, let me adjourn the meeting then.
Excuse me? We have the joint session.
And then we have item number two on the joint session, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Authority Member Becerra?
Yes.
Authority Member Mendoza?
Yes.
Authority Member Peñalosa?
Yes.
Authority Member Sarmiento?
Yes.
Authority Member Solorio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vegas?
Yes.
Chair Pulido?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Are we now on item 85A, is it?
Yes, and Mayor, before you proceed with 85A, I did want to indicate that I did have also received some communication by email. Three were in opposition, and they were Santa Ana residents or business owners. And then we had one, Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce, who just thanked the mayor for years of service and support. And that's all.
Mayor, if I may, you need to adjourn the Housing Authority Meeting and convene back to city council.
All right, that meeting is adjourned, and now we're back to the city council meeting, agenda 85A.
Mayor, if I may, make a quick comment before we get started. I just wanted to announce that to the mayor and councilmembers, as this item may impact a contract that I currently have with the city, I'm going to step down from acting in my official capacity as city attorney for this item. We will have on the line our Chief Assistant City Attorney, Laura Rosini, so she will advise on any procedural matters, or if you have any questions. But I will remain available as an individual to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that. Let me also state that I received a communication from Councilmember Mendoza, and it's my understanding that she wants to make a statement, but after a statement, she's going to withdraw the action. So if that's the case, this might be very, a very quick item. Councilmember Mendoza, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to clarify that this issue is not a personnel issue, nor does it reflect on our current city attorney, Sonia Carvajal. It doesn't reflect on her performance evaluation. So about three months ago, I requested the backup data from our city manager and city attorney, and I apologize to our city manager that I was not clear with the purpose of my request. My intention is to save our city money and to bring, to help to bring our budget to a more balanced level. It is not my intention to fire our city attorney, and I actually encourage Attorney Carvajal to apply for the position if council elects to go to an in-house attorney method. So to Attorney Carvajal, to the mayor, and my fellow councilmembers, our voters, and the public who are listening now, be assured that no one requested, demanded, threatened, or intimidated me into putting this issue before you. I am no one's puppet on any item on our agenda. As a matter of fact, I have been harassed, intimidated, and threatened to remove this item from our calendar. It is offensive to me that someone abused my relationship with a state-elected official in attempt to have me withdraw this item. I have a fiduciary obligation to the voters who elected me to represent them. I promise to look at areas where the city can save money. I will be looking at other departments also. But for now, the city attorney's office is one area where we can explore to determine whether to keep business as usual or whether to go back to an in-house attorney process. I was elected by the voters to make some difficult decisions during these dire times, such as the time when the city council elected to transfer our fire department operations to the county of Orange. In this instance, I want to explore having our legal work done with an in-house attorney rather than a private firm. If we choose to stay with a private firm, then we need to determine whether the city is getting competitive pricing. And I am satisfied that this is not a reflection of Attorney Carvajal's performance, and if council elects to go to an in-house method, then she is encouraged to apply for the position. So attached to this item is a ledger of legal fees prepared by our city attorney that reflects costs that the city of Santa Ana has paid out for the outside law firm services. I ask staff to analyze the financial data of our present-day legal operations, such as litigation costs, outside law firm expenses, and attorney fees, and to include a comparison of the same legal costs and fees when the city had an in-house attorney who at that time was Joel Fletcher. However, I noted that the ledger does not contain the data as to what the city was paying in legal fees when we had such in-house attorneys. Thus, it is not possible this time to make an informed decision on this critical issue. It is my belief that in the long run, the in-house attorney method would mean thousands of dollars in savings to our city and to our residents. I ask my colleagues to support this issue to save significant dollars for our city and to help balance the budget. As it seems that this fiscal year, the city is already about $20 million in the red. Since we do not have enough information tonight, I am pulling the item to be continued to a future date when we have proper comparison numbers to make an educated vote.
All right, so with that, as chair, I will allow you to pull the item, and a new city council can take it up at your decision in the future if you choose to do so. So with that, what's the next item, Madam City Clerk, please?
We're on city manager's comments.
Go ahead, city manager's comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of comments. First, I just want to point out that yesterday, under the order of Governor Newsom and the California Department of Public Health, our county was moved into the purple tier, which is a more restrictive tier, and it does impact industries and activities in our county. The measure was in effect 24 hours from his announcement, which was yesterday. So I encourage Santa Ana residents to visit the state's website. It's covid19.ca.gov, and they can find out what activities and businesses are permitted to continue to operate and those types of modifications that they need to have. I know we're going into a holiday, and as the holiday season is coming up, I know people want to visit family and friends, but we do encourage them to always take the precautions and wear face masks and make sure that they're aware that there is a travel advisory to encourage folks to stay at home to reduce the spread of COVID. At our own city, we have, you know, a large number of employees, and since the government is a essential service, we have continued to work throughout all of this time. It doesn't matter which tier we're in, the government services have to be provided. And we certainly have seen an uptick in the COVID cases among our employees. For example, from June to October, we only had non-sworn employees, eight of them that tested positive, but from the beginning of November to present, we have had 10 employees test positive. As a result of those positive tests, we have actively engaged in contact tracing, testing another 89 individuals. Unfortunately, of those 89 tested, only one was positive. And just my usual update on the CARES. We have now distributed over 275,000 face masks. Our pandemic support hotline has assisted over 5,000 callers, and we have provided close to $4 million in business grant assistance. And our mobile resource center has visited, they completed the visit of over 100 city neighborhoods and park locations, bringing the aid directly to our community and to those residents. We have almost conducted 12,000 free COVID tests for the residents, and this week, there are two additional mobile resource centers scheduled. Tomorrow, our CARES team will be at Memorial Park and then Centennial Park on Friday. Both events go from 12:30 to 7:00 p.m. And we most recently entered into an agreement with UC Irvine. We've partnered with them to provide COVID-19 antibody testing and data modeling so that we can track the spread of the virus in our community. The antibody testing checks for COVID-19, it tests for antibodies in your blood, which may tell if the individual has already had COVID-19 in the past. In the following weeks, many of our residents will be contacted by UC Irvine representatives, and they will be visiting local neighborhoods to offer the antibody test to entire households free of charge, and each participating household will receive their antibody test results in the mail. If the residents have any question, there will be a number that they can call. At the conclusion of this, UCI Irvine will be preparing the city a data modeling report that will give us insight as to what areas in the city that we still could have a potential spread and what areas where it has already saturated the community, so we can plan and deploy future resources accordingly. And that is it. Thank you.
Just one suggestion on that, Madam City Manager. For those that have email, instead of providing the results through the US mail, if we could, you know, email them the people that have email available, I think that would be a wise thing to do. Councilor Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for those comments. It, you know, it gives great reassurance to our community that the city has been doing its part to try to help flatten the curve and try to tackle this issue that's impacted so many of us. I wanted to, you know, speaking of COVID, one thing I wanted to ask our folks in PD to really start to really look at some of the businesses that, you know, I'm getting calls from many constituents that are alerting me to businesses that are just essentially flaunting the safety precautions that we need to see taken in order to reduce the spread of COVID, whether it's at our malls, whether it's at restaurants or businesses. Now that the governor has moved Orange County in its totality down to the purple tier, we need to really step up enforcement. And my hope is that PD will take extra precaution on it. I know that there are plenty of things that occupy PD's times, but I think, given the seriousness of the pandemic, my hope is that there will be some attention paid to that. Another issue I wanted to bring to PD's attention, and I think it's something of, really, I'll say grave concern, and that is folks standing in our medians, whether they're panhandling or whether they're attempting to sell various items. I'm all for capitalism, but I'm also for safety, and I do not want to see somebody perish because they decided to stand in the middle of a median where you've got maybe three feet worth of width of a curb, if that, and you've got many a cars zooming by at God knows how many speeds. It's just a dangerous situation, and I hate to say it, but I have seen some of our officers pass by it as if it's another piece of landscaping, and those folks are going to get injured. I'm not asking for arrests. I'm asking for just simply warning these folks and having them removed from the medians because I just think it would be, it'd just be terrible to hear of somebody passing because of that. I do want to take the opportunity, since Veterans Day passed between council meetings, I wanted to echo some of the sentiments we heard from some of our callers and thank our Mayor Potem Vegas and Councilmember Mendoza for their service in our nation's armed forces, and to all those in Santa Ana who have served our armed forces as well. And with that, coming up will be Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. But, you know, just to echo the sentiments, I want to make sure that everybody celebrates responsibly and takes very seriously what we're hearing out there in regards to the elevated cases in COVID. Let's not be irresponsible, but let's enjoy the family that we can enjoy, but please celebrate responsibly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Mendoza, please.
Sorry about that. I muted myself. Yes, I have some points here on the sanitation meeting that I attended in October, and so I just want to update council and mayor on a few of the projects that have been, have taken place. So the Orange County Sanitation District is one step closer to constructing its largest project to date. It's called a headwork rehabilitation project at plant number one. It is the heart of the plant, and it is the first point of entry for about 120 million gallons of wastewater that reaches plant number one every day. The project includes major rehabilitation, new structures, and demolition of existing facilities with a construction value of $293 million. The seven-year project will issue the construction notice to proceed in March of 2021, with a groundbreaking to take place during the summer. Sanitation Department is also working on a food waste facility project. And the request for information was issued last month to evaluate the type, quality, quantity, and readiness of food waste feedstocks available to Orange County Sanitation Department that will help the local jurisdictions such as Santa Ana meet state mandate to reduce the amount of organic materials entering the landfill. Responses to the RFI were received in October and are being evaluated. The receiving facility design is complete and will be advertised for construction in December of 2020, with construction projects to be completed by September 2022, which is well in advance of the 2025 deadline set by the state. We are moving, the effort to demolish the four buildings that currently sit on the future site of the headquarters building in Fountain Valley. The site will be prepared for construction of the new building set to begin in the fall of 2021. And while the design of the new building was substantially completed earlier in the year, flexibility was built in to allow for updates to be made to comply with new guidelines, standards, and codes resulting from the current pandemic that have yet to be provided. All safety measures and precautions will be made as we continue to move forward with this project. And lastly, don't forget that the Orange County Sanitation District has virtual tours. They continue to provide behind-the-scenes look at the operations through the pandemic. OCSD is offering virtually guided and self-guided tours in lieu of physical tours, which have been temporarily canceled. The tours showcase how the sanitation department provides essential services and continues to serve the Orange County community. The public and you are invited to sign up for a tour at www.ocsd.com/tours. That is the end of my report for the sanitation department, and I wish to give thanks to all the veterans and my colleague, Mayor Potem Vegas, for the service to our wonderful nation and the continued public service that he has given to our beautiful city. Thank you, our staff, for all the hard work, and good night to everyone.
Thank you for that. Councilor Peñalosa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, well, keep it short, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and highly encourage to all our residents listening, our staff, if you can, first of all, don't have crazy gatherings, but if you can, order your Thanksgiving dinner from local restaurants, help out your local restaurants. I know there's a lot of nearby restaurants in the city that are selling fully cooked meals. It'd be really, really good if we could help wherever we can and support these local small businesses during Thanksgiving. With that said, I just want to thank staff. I know there's a lot of good work being done. I communicate with the city attorney all the time about all the good litigation- There's a lot of good things happening in our city. And with that said, I also want to just wish our city attorney a happy birthday coming up later this week, right? No? Yes?
Recent.
I made a mistake. It's on my agenda, so somebody did that by mistake. So I take that back.
Happy birthday.
Councilmember Sarmiento, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I am, I'm unfortunately going to have to say a couple of things later on. We're going to be adjourning in the memory of two people that were very special to the city. So before I begin those, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that were made previously on the current spike that we've had in COVID cases here in San Ana. So, you know, I'm really, really troubled by this because I know it's impacting so many families, so many businesses, and I want to appreciate all the good work that staff has done to try to keep these levels low. There's been some good news, bad news sort of things. The good news is that we have this effort through the CARES Act where I understand that yesterday at Madison Park, or the day before, we had over 400 people go and get tested. So that's amazing, right? That is good news. You know, to offset that good news with bad news is that our positivity rate is up around 15% relative to what the county is at, which is about 5. So those are troubling numbers for us, and we know that our families are disproportionately impacted, our businesses that were just starting to get themselves ramped up even at a 25% to 50% clip was making them, you know, viable. So I want to repeat what was said, you know, just because we need to drive it home to everybody. Look, we, this is, this is the moment that, you know, and this is the season that we're supposed to be celebrating with people we love and people we care about and gathering, and this is just not the time for that. And we have a lot of things to be thankful for, and one of those is just making sure that we protect ourselves and we keep ourselves safe. So to the extent that we can encourage people to maybe just pass on it for this year as we passed on so many other things, high school graduations, parties, ceremonies, things that are really dear and important to us, this is one more season that we're going to have to, you know, let go and just wait till a better 2021. So, you know, I do want to also just be thankful for people in San Ana who, you know, just voted at a very high clip and, you know, and participated in a historical election. By Monday, the day before the election, more than 50% of our residents and voters had voted already. So what we did here to make sure that there were enough drop boxes, voting centers, that really worked. In a pandemic, to have numbers as high as those, people participating in the democratic process is amazing, and the majority of those folks that had voted early were between 18 and 35. So that means that our young people really got excited and participated, and that's what we want to see in a democracy, is full participation. So I know the county is about at 85%. Those are astronomical numbers for people to get out and vote, especially under these conditions. So, you know, props to everybody who helped, you know, at the registrar's office, and I know we had the registrar's representative here. So props to everyone here to make sure that we made a safe process for people to vote, and hopefully, you know, at the national level, they'll see what we did here and, you know, you know, pay attention to smooth transitions and good things and, you know, congratulate those that went on and congratulate those that participated. So the final thing before I begin the two biographies on the folks that we're going to adjourn in memory of is I know that we had a well that we had to take offline because of a contaminant called PFAS, and that was Well 38, which is located, I think, on Cambridge Street. Since then, we've had three other wells that have detected this contaminant, and it's a very, very small presence. It's like 20 parts per trillion, but nonetheless, out of an abundance of caution, our Public Works Director, and I agree with him very much, and the Orange County Water District are going to be taking those additional three wells offline, so they're no longer providing water service to us, which means we have to purchase imported water, which is about twice the cost. But what we can tell you is that the Water District, that the Orange County Water District, we've already begun wellhead treatment for Well 38, and we'll be doing that for those three additional wells, so we can get those back online and, you know, and continue pumping water from the groundwater because that is the most inexpensive, safe way to get our water for our city. Finally, I just want to adjourn in memory of two people who, one I knew very well, one I knew very little, but I had the privilege of knowing his daughter. And his name is Vernon Vern Renaud Napier, and he was born on November 12th in 1941 in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and he was the first of three sons of Vernon and Rosetta Napier. Vern's father, Vernon, relocated the family to Orange County in 1942 when Vern was only six months. Vernon has two younger brothers, Fats and John, were active kids. Vern joined the Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Explorers, and eventually moving on to the Civil Air Patrol. He played football, basketball, and was in the band, high school marching band. He graduated from San Ana High School in 1960. Upon finishing high school, he enrolled at San Ana Junior College and worked in jobs that satisfied his interests as a gearhead. Vern was drafted to the United States Army in 1964, eventually serving in Vietnam as a radio operator from 1964 to 66. Upon returning from Vietnam, he went back to college and his old job. Vern married Jean Marie Alderson in 1973 at the Johnson Chapel AME Church on First Street. They had their first daughter, Amanda, in 1974, followed quickly by their second daughter, Amy, in 1976. Their third daughter, Allison, arrived in 1979, and she was the person I met, we knew her as Ally. She was a very good friend of former Councilwoman Michelle Martinez, and I had the privilege of getting to know Ally well. The long-awaited arrival of their only son, Matthew, came in 1983. After years of working for others, Vern started his own operation in 1980. While running his own business proved trying at times, Vern stuck with it until his eventual retirement just a few years ago. Vern enjoyed flying electric airplanes, spending time with old friends, talking politics, and keeping the creative energy flowing in his hobby shop, picking up projects here and there and restoring a '37 Chevy Coupe. Vern is survived by his wife, four children, and eight grandchildren. So to the Napier family, we send our condolences. He lived a very good life, and, you know, I know Ally in particular, somebody who's just a, just a great person, and I know she's missing her dad these days. The other person who I'd like us to adjourn in memory of is, his name is Fabio Peña, and some of you may know Fabio. He was the president of the Federación Michoacana. He passed away just last week. He was 66 years old. He was a, he was a very frequent presence at the Mexican consulate because he represented the state of Michoacan with a lot of energy and with a lot of dignity. His dream was to have a Casa Michoacana here in San Ana, which would be a community center for the folks from the state of Michoacan. What I didn't know about Fabio and what was told to me by his two kids and his wife was that he was a soccer player when he was a young man, and he played with Amerika, which is a famous soccer team in Mexico City. He also loved to play the guitar and sing, and you wouldn't have met a more gentle soul than Fabio. He was somebody who spoke very softly, but, you know, always had good things to say and was always ready and willing to help those that were in need. And, you know, we are going to miss him because he had so many good projects that he worked on in San Ana. He inspired so many people. He was a vital, you know, role in our Fiesta de Patricio parade, and he was not a resident of San Ana, but spent most of his time here trying to inspire people to, you know, develop their culture in their different states in Mexico. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to adjourn this meeting in memory of Fabio Peña and Vern Napier. And with that, I'll wish everybody a good night, happy Thanksgiving. Please, everybody, stay safe. Thank you.
My pleasure to adjourn in their names, Councilmember Sarmiento. May I just say, Mayor-elect Sarmiento. With that, I think José Solario, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sarmiento, congratulations. I know, you know, we sparred out via, you know, the internet and the mail system and, you know, giving, giving all the, all the candidates, the voters chose you, and I wish you well. I know that you're a bright man, you work hard, you love the city, as I do another, so know that I want to see you be successful, and I just wish you and your family well these next couple of years and then, you know, after that. So congratulations very much. Two other items. On the CARES funding, I know it was kind of rolled out by the state kind of as a use it or lose it, you know, and I commented early on that, you know, spending 28 million, being a government official myself, you know, for a special district, I know it takes a lot of effort to spend that kind of money well and diligently. I know there are some things that we're tracking really well, and I know there's a lot of things being processed, but the rental assistance money and the utility assistance, I think we can't promote that enough, so just keep pushing out those programs and know the local events really help. But also, I know Madam City Manager and Mr. Mayor and, you know, Mayor-elect Sarmiento, maybe too, I know it may not be easy, but via the state or the feds, and I think with the Democratic administration, I feel much better about it, maybe they can allow for a carryover, or maybe they could suggest ways that you can encumber some of those dollars so that, you know, we can keep it and use it, you know, beyond, you know, late November, December timeframe. I mean, it's around the corner. You probably know much better than us that the date, so let's really try to do that. And then finally, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I know with COVID, there's a lot of hardships in town and across the country, but it's also just the time for people to reflect on everything that we ought to be grateful for. I know I've been blessed, you know, being raised in this country and everything that we've accomplished, and I know my colleagues and, you know, many people in San Ana have achieved great things, so we have a lot of, lots to be grateful for. Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Viegas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to thank everyone for tuning in this evening, and I just want to clarify my vote on 85A, which we spoke about earlier today regarding rescinding a resolution that we had for a particular project that was going to take place.
I think that was 50, 55A.
I'm sorry, 55A. Thank you, thank you, 55A. And, you know, the staff recommended to rescind this, and that's what I was doing following the staff recommendation. I had met with the city manager, I met with the city attorney, and that is their recommendation, and I was following it, and I still believe in it. I understand that my colleagues don't want to follow that. They believe it's a risk, it's a high risk. Everything's a risk, the way I see it. And so anyway, just wanted to clarify that item, 55A, and my position on it, and thank you very much. That's my comment.
Thank you. And what I'm going to state is on 55A, just for the record, for the city attorney or anybody listening, that I have absolutely no business relationship with anybody involved with that, with that item. Just want to state that for the record. Also, I want to, I want to congratulate Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and I just want to say I look forward to a smooth transition. I've been talking to him about COVID, and I want to do whatever I can to help the city and the city council, you know, continue to work on that issue, so I'm intending just to volunteer in an attempt to be helpful. We, you know, we start to do better than we do worse, and it's clear that, you know, we need, you know, full strength on this pandemic issue. So with that, I think we got a lot of important business done tonight. In particular, the Third and Broadway project, I think, is absolutely monumental, and again, kudos to everybody, but in particular, I think, my chair, the developer, and Christine Ridge, who as staff came in and in a matter of a short period of time was able to accelerate matters and get the project over the goal line. So again, congratulations. And, City Clerk, I want to make sure that I, you know, follow the request of Mayor Protem as relates to, you know, adjourning this meeting in memory of the two fine individuals that he talked about earlier.
Mayor.
So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Yes, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, you mean Mayor-elect. I think you keep calling him Mayor Protem.
Mayor-elect, Mayor-elect. Mayor-elect, Vince Sarmiento, sorry about that. Mayor-elect.
Thank you.
So with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Have a great night.